Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Thursday, September 17th. A meeting we departed from our normal Tuesday schedule due to the Jewish High Holy Day, Rosh Hashanah, and will be meeting again next Thursday due to Yom Kippur. So these are departures from our normal schedule. Anyone have any announcements? I have one, which is Brookline Day, which is this Sunday. There's a series of events, starting with the Road Race, which starts at something like-
Eight thirty in the morning.
Eight thirty a.m.
I think the events at Lars Anderson for everybody else are starting at eleven.
Correct. Right.
It's usually a fun time, and I know our town departments and various groups are going to be represented there, as well as they have a lot of fun things for the little kids. So it should be a nice day.
Right.
And BrooklineDay.org is a good resource if you've got questions about the when and the where.
Right, and it goes from eleven to three at Lars Anderson Park. Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First, I'm happy Mel has arrived, because I wanted to compliment him. We had a devotion school building committee meeting this morning, and I want to say that Mel did a terrific job over the last week assembling people from various town departments to look at a property that the school department is considering as an off-site location to move the children from devotion school. So that they, we were considering doing that project in phases with the kids in part of the building, while part of it would be demolished, that has some obvious problems and would be a three-year operation. Then we began considering either putting them on the very back of the site in modulators, which, or moving them off-site. Either of those two options makes it a two-year building process, which is good. But I think the school department certainly prefers the off-site option, because you don't have the noise, the dust, the demolition and whatever going on right next door. And so we had a number of questions. I can't mention the site, because there's still some ongoing negotiations, but I think we're maybe getting close with it. And Mel really did a terrific job getting everyone to focus in on what questions there might be about this site, so that we would know if it was going to be a possibility or not, and how much work would need to be done to bring this up to code for having children in the building. So, thank you, Mel, for your efforts. So, and the, that, the devotion project continues to march along, and I want to say that we're, on September 30th, we're having a public meeting at devotion, and I would love it if some of my fellow selectmen could join us for that. There's going to be a presentation on the project, and also, you know, a presentation to parents also about these various options for what might happen with their kids during those couple of years.
What time is that meeting?
So that's at seven o'clock on the 30th, which is a Wednesday, at the devotion auditorium.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to mention, I would, just before coming here tonight, I was over at the Brookline Community Aging Network annual meeting, where they were giving an award on, for his passion and devotion to trans, public transportation to Governor Michael Dukakis. But the, the Brookline, Brookline Can is the acronym they use, has really done a great job sort of mobilizing seniors to find ways to help themselves and help other seniors. And I complimented the Mel, those who'd been out reporting back to us where we needed to increase our snow and ice removal efforts this winter.
No doubt.
As they were, they were an important part of the process. But the other thing I just did want to mention that, because I stopped by there this afternoon, but the farmer's market is still, it's not, it's not still running today, because it's, it's closed now, but it is, there are still another three or four weeks, I think through October, the farmer's market is still on, and there's still quite a bit of produce and whatever there, so.
Okay. Yes?
I'll just mention really quickly that our esteemed Ethel Weiss, who were the proprietress of Irving's Toy and Card Shop, who just turned 101 in August, was the focus of a segment on CBS Evening News on Friday night. I have to say, I visited with her on Thursday afternoon. She is an amazing person. She's so resilient, and I want to ask her to bottle her secret, because I think we could all benefit from it. But I don't know whether, there's an opportunity, if you didn't see it, whether you can get it in some other way.
Yeah, it's online.
It's online? Okay.
CBSMorning.org.
It was on Sunday morning as well.
Yeah.
It's a great, it's a great piece, and certainly speaks to Ethel's centrality in the devotion school community and that, that stretch of Harvard Street. So I would recommend everybody check it out.
Okay, moving on to the next item, if we're ready, public comment, and we have, Ray Schwartz has signed up for public comment. I'll just remind Mr. Schwartz and our audience that we take public comment for items that are not normally on the agenda. If you sign up in advance by Friday typically before the, the week before, and we, we would give you the opportunity to speak for three minutes, and we normally don't make any comments or response. So, you're on.
Hi, what I'm going to talk about-
Yeah, need to talk into the microphone.
Pull it over toward you, yes.
Short people here. I'm going to talk about the bicycle-
Did you also introduce yourself again?
My name is Ray Schwartz, 61 Babcock Street. I've been a Brookline resident my whole life, from Uncle School, Brookline High, the whole nine yards. My issue is the bicycle advisory board. As a member of Babcock Street, I was at the meeting. So what I decided to do is do a little research, and I called up the embassies of both the Netherlands and Denmark, and nobody from the Boston area has quizzed them as to what they do. Both embassies told me the way to enforce bicycle laws is to have heavy fines, and the fines for going through a red light, going through a stop sign, can be a hundred euros, which at 1.10 euro to the dollar, is a thousand krona, which I don't have the rate. And they said that's the way, and they are aghast in Washington, D.C. at the amount of people that go through red lights and stop signs. And they said they would be heavily fined, and, you know, they have the police, and the Netherlands actually has the highest fines in Europe. In addition, their bikes are up to have a safety code. A policeman stops you, and they will find out if your brakes work, if you have a working bell, et cetera, et cetera. The fines range from thirty euros up to forty euros. If you talk on a bike, with a bicycle, as well as a car, with a phone, cellphone, it's a hundred and some, oh no, it's a thousand krona and a hundred and, a hundred and forty euros. So when the bicycle committee, advisory committee talks about safety, I don't see a paper, I don't see them politicking for what Europe does. They say, "We want to be like Europe." Well, let's have the fines like Europe. I've been in touch with the, what's her name, our senator, and she's writing up laws, because that's in her committee, and I've given it to her. I've given Jeff Jacoby all this information, also the gentleman that you have in your transportation department, Dan, I've sent him a lot of this, and I'm going to leave a lot of paper with you, because I've done some research. Also, you know, when we had the meeting for Babcock Street, Mr. Heinemann said that it was well-balanced. I guess he's on the, I think I'm pronouncing it right, he's one of the advisory board, and he said that it was even. I was there, there were approximately sixty residents from Babcock Street, absolutely zero were in favor of getting rid of the parking. The only people that spoke up in favor of getting rid of the parking were four members of the advisory board, one Boston consultant, I don't know what he was doing, and one woman who came just from a side street there. Also, April of 2015, the Boston Globe magazine, that Sunday magazine, picked Babcock Street number one street in Brookline to live in, and you can look it up, and that's with parking, without parking. Lastly, I recommend that you create a bicycle board that's balanced. I mean, they're a bunch of, they're probably wonderful people, but they have the zealots zeal, and you need to, I think, start from scratch and make sure that you have people who are not totally biased. And as I say, here you have information on the Netherlands and whatever, also the article from the Globe, and all in Germany, and you'll see they all have major fines, and the big problem is to make people recognize the law not to be scullish, because every one of you, I guarantee, has sat in traffic and seen bicyclists not stop for red lights, not stop for stop signs. I once saw near Chapel Street, a bicyclist brush a pedestrian crossing in the crosswalk and yelling at her, because it was her fault. Now, again, that's isolated incident, but that's, we've got to, if you want to have what they have in Europe, you have to follow the laws, and they put teeth in the laws. And that's why Ms. Crema, the senator, she's writing up a bill, and as I said, I've given her all this stuff. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
And you guys can have this.
Yeah.
Can I just say, as a general matter, we entrust transportation matters to our transportation board, but when they make a decision on something, a set of policy, or have a vote on something, those can be appealed to this board, if appealed within 30 days?
Right. Yeah, and the Babcock Street design has been sent back to the-
Yeah, I don't think they've made a decision on it.
Right, right, and that's going to come back.
But if they make a decision and you're unhappy with it, it can be appealed up to this board.
Right.
I think I talked to you on the phone a few weeks back, and I haven't been able to, it's just, there's a lot of false information out here.
Yeah.
It's not even split, not even close.
I just want to say, before we start proceeding down the agenda, I want to just say a little something about the agenda. Normally, we go in order of the agenda, and there's a long list of, of typically housekeeping kinds of, some of them are a lot more than housekeeping, there's a lot of money at stake, contract items that we go through before we hit the regular calendar. Tonight, we noticed a discussion about the footbridge for seven o'clock, and I put out a, an email to the Town Meeting Members Association stating that it would start at around 7:30. So what I'm going to do is start down the miscellaneous calendar until we hit 7:30, and then we'll switch into the discussion of the footbridge, and then we'll go back to the miscellaneous calendar. So for those of you who are here for the footbridge, bear with us for 15 minutes or so, and then we'll start talking about the footbridge and Route 9. So I think that's how we'll proceed. So first item on the miscellaneous calendar is minutes. We had held previously the minutes for August 25th. That was a meeting where Selectman Daley was, was absent. I found one more change. So if you have any changes, get them to-
Yeah, I have one, then I'll get to the other.
Okay, so I'll move the August 25th minutes as amended. All those in favor? Selectman Daley?
Abstain.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And the September 8th minutes, any changes?
I had some amendments, which I passed in to keep.
Okay. I'll move acceptance of the September 8th minutes. All those in favor? We only have three people present, according to this. So, Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Abstain.
Selectman Green?
Aye, abstain also.
Right, and I, chair votes aye. The next item is discussing the question of appointing Attorney John Leonard as special counsel in matters pertaining to the town's use of eminent domain. I'll just say one thing in introduction. We're dealing with a number of items, including studying the warrant article, that was before town meeting, and that's in progress. And there's also a study for a ninth school, where we're considering eminent domain options, and this, Mr. Leonard, should we approve, this contract would, would be retained to help us with those matters. So with that said?
Good evening, if it pleases the board, Ross and Murphy's Council. As you know, my office is seeking this board's authority to engage Attorney John Leonard to provide consulting services to my office in the area of eminent domain. Certainly eminent domain is not a power that is exercised often in this town. It has historically been exercised, but it's an area that our office is not extremely well-versed in, and so we are recommending hiring counsel to assist us, and in particular, Attorney John Leonard. I believe this board has seen his firm biography, which is quite descriptive and indicates the extensive experience he has in this area. He's been a partner at Menard in Walsh for several years, having practiced as a trial attorney for greater than 40 years. He's represented private individuals and municipalities in matters pertaining to eminent domain, and he's written and lectured at the MCL and other organizations extensively in the area of eminent domain takings. He has represented the city of Cambridge, Revere, Marlborough, Barnstable, and the MBTA, and he recently represented the owner of land in Totten, which was taken by the city for recreational and conservation purposes. He also participated heavily in the MBTA's eminent domain takings in order to extend the Silver Line, so he has very relevant and recent experience. He also has extensive appellate experience in this particular area. So in my view, he's particularly well-qualified to provide consulting services to my office. He's also a double eagle, having attended both Boston College and Boston College Law School. So I respectfully request that the board authorize the engagement of Mr. Leonard for the purpose of consulting to my office in the area of eminent domain.
Any questions, comments?
No, you had me at double eagle on.
Couldn't go to B.C. High as well.
Then it'd be a triple.
Triple eagle, exactly. So I reviewed his biography, and he has a long and impressive history of litigation going all the way back to 1970. So clearly is, is well-versed in these issues, and is a frequent guest before, before the courts to talk about eminent domain and other regulatory-taking issues.
Okay, with that said, I think we're ready for a motion. Then I'll move that we appoint John Leonard, Attorney John Leonard, as special counsel in matters pertaining to the town's use of eminent domain, as recommended by town council. All those in favor? Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the question of approving the change order number three in the amount of a credit of $11,911 for allowance reconciliation made by GTC Construction in connection with the Fisher Hill Gatehouse Renovations and Comfort Station. Mr. Maisak?
Ray Maisak, Building Department. This change order is, like you said, is a reconciliation of eight items, and it is a credit. Those allowances were used to deal with unforeseen conditions, such as brick, the brownstone, wood on the roof, brackets, as well as it wipes out about a $6,500 claim. The last item was a masonry issue, and when the contractor signs off on that, basically the town walks from that extra. So I recommend approval.
Okay. Questions, comments?
We're always happy to get the credits.
Then I'll move-
This is one going in the right direction.
Yeah. I'll move that we approve change order number three in the amount of a credit of $11,911 for allowance reconciliation made by GTC Construction in connection with the Fisher Hill Gatehouse Renovations and Comfort Station. All those in favor? Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. The next item is a question of approving change order number one in the amount of $15,467.55 for it to be performed by Vanguard Company in connection with the Baker School modulators. Mr. Maisak?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this involves eight items. I'll just give you a very brief history on how you do a modular design. The town put together a design package of design standards, and then Vanguard puts together the design. When I put together the design package, I used an architectural rendering, and in the back, we showed a stair, because the big item is the ramp at about $18,000. The remaining items has to do with the package that they submit as part of their design, such as adding an adjoining door, door hardware, deleting some power panels. It's basically going through the shop drawing and then agreeing to the design. We did make our deadline on September 1st exactly. I'm really proud of that. I'm not downplaying, but I had shown a stairs, and I should have shown a ramp. So we asked Vanguard to put the ramp in, they jumped on it, and now the facility is fully accessible.
Question I have, do we own the modulators now, or are we leasing them?
We're leasing tongue, and that's how, it was a very cost-effective solution.
So after-
Five years.
Five years, we, we own them?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, then I'll move approval of change order number one in the amount of $15,467.55 for work to be performed by Vanguard Company in connection with the Baker School modulators. All those in favor? Please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Let's see if we can do one or two more before we start talking about the bridge. So this is item E, question of approving and executing a contract in the amount of $48,000 with Schwartz Silver Architects in connection with a feasibility study for the Coolidge Corner Cinema. Mr. Maisak, again.
We had a committee of seven. We had fifteen firms submit for said feasibility. We shortlisted the four firms, we interviewed said four firms, and Schwartz Silver was our recommended firm for that. Feasibility will involve looking at the existing building as well as a new building, and then when we have the feasibility study in the summer, there's a round of funding that will be made available through the Library Trust, I think that's what it's called, and having the feasibility study will allow us at least the opportunity to look at that funding source.
And that's a potential, what, 50% of the state funding a future Coolidge Corner project?
A project.
A project, whatever, wherever it might be, whatever. I presume it would continue to be in that neck of town.
Yeah, no, I'll just note, you should remind Ms. Hyatt that she needs to recuse herself when this, anything to do with this comes before the advisory committee.
We did, we did have her go up to town council and review that type of issue.
Right. Okay, so I will move approval and authority to execute a contract in the amount of $48,000 with Schwartz Silver Architects in connection with a feasibility study for the Coolidge Corner Library. All those in favor? Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I think we can do one more.
Mr. Maisak has a couple small, more small ones, maybe we can finish him up.
You have three more. These are little ones, so, okay. The next one is the question of approving and executing a contract in the amount of $46,500 with CBI Consulting in connection with the Town Hall and Physical Education Building Elevator Modifications. Mr. Maisak?
We had a committee of seven again. We had three firms. CBI was selected. This is a continuing appropriation to modernize our elevators, as well as address the issues at the Town Hall elevators. So we did have a study for, from Artie Kimball to help us provide which elevators we should be doing, and as well as addressing Town Hall.
I just got to, I would just got to say, it seems like a lot of money when, isn't the design pretty obvious, you know, that the elevators kind of go up and down in a narrow column sort of arrangement?
Elevator, would you like me to speak to what we're doing?
I think she's interested in Town Hall elevator.
Yeah, I have personally been stuck in the Town Hall one, so that one, of course, is a higher priority for me.
I'm not going to minimize this, but the controllers are no longer supported by the elevator manufacturer. That's a huge issue.
So when you're talking about design, you're talking about all the elements that-
We've replaced most of the elements, but to be told that they no longer will provide software to the elevator controllers, and then there's a communication cable that goes between the controller and the car. And Embra, our house doctor contractor, stated they, since they replaced, well, we had the Town Hall renovation, we replaced probably 90%, they replaced another 8%, and the other 2% is what they're recommending, that being the controller and the communication cable.
Any other questions? I'll therefore move approval and authority to execute a contract in the amount of $45,000, $46,500 CBI Consulting in connection with Town Hall and Physical Education Building Elevator Modifications. All those in favor? Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Two more, and then we'll get, get on to the bridge. Next item is the question of approving and executing a contract in the amount of $133,930 with Russo Bar Associates in connection with the Building Envelope Repair and Roof Replacement Program. Mr. Maisak, again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Lucky you.
We had a committee of seven, it was assigned. Russo Bar was ranked the highest out of nine firms. This is for building envelope and roof repairs, and it's a continuing appropriation to maintain our building.
So this is a design contract?
Yes.
And I noticed in the, in the engagement letter, there's reference to some fiscal 2015 projects? So these are projects that weren't executed in, were doing them in '16, or?
Like the Transportation Museum over at Lars Anderson.
And this is all masonry on roofs?
Half roofs, half, half masonry. It was a little cheat sheet, man.
Okay.
So is it fair to assume that this large contract is going to save us money in the long run? So if we were to pass on this, we would end up spending far more money replacing roofs and mitigating water damage and the sort?
It's always a good program when you do, it's basically part of the capital needs assessment, to ensure the integrity of your roofs and the walls don't have problems. And you folks have made a rather significant investment in that.
I noticed that the Transportation Museum was in there, and I thought they were responsible for their own repairs.
I'm not sure about the roof.
We've converted that, Nancy, to, no longer does the town take credits associated with repairs. It was being, becoming very difficult to quantify and verify those repairs, so we converted the lease to a situation where we would get a cash, all cash rent, and then we would allocate, we, those, the cash would go into a special fund, and from that, we would use to, to do our repairs. We felt it was something we could control a little better.
Okay.
Is that the same story with the music school, with the Connard House? Do you remember if that, that lease was written in the same way?
You know, I don't recall offhand. I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'll find out.
Okay, so- Okay, so no further, if there's no further discussion, I'll move approval and authority to execute a contract in the amount of $133,930 with Russo Bar Associates in connection with the Building Envelope Repair and Roof Replacement Program. All those in favor, say aye. Selectman Daly.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Last one, and then we'll go on to the bridge. And this is the question of approving and executing a contract in the amount of $66,070 with Bargman, Hendry and Archetype in connection with the renovations to the Evelyn Coraine Aquatic Center. Mr. Masak.
Again, we had a committee of seven. Four firms submitted. Bargman Hendry was considered the highest-ranked firm. This deals with, we don't have structural issues, but again, it's to try to mitigate any issues that might happen at the pool. So we're going to look and investigate some issues we saw with some spalling concrete, not major issues, but deal with that. And then deal with the locker room redesign. One thing I should note, the committee of seven, Lisa Paradies, the head of the Rec Department, had an issue with some of the electrical lighting over the pool. And I got Bargman Hendry to agree, as the vote was positive, to do that at no cost to the town. So there was a design issue. I said, "You need to address it." They said, "We will." And then, we then continued with the negotiations.
So this is a question for Mr. Cluckner. I know the Recreation Department's in the process of trying to do some fundraising for renovations in the locker room. Is this dollar figure we see here, the maximum amount the town is going to spend or is the potential that we may be obligated to spend additional funds depending on how that fundraising effort goes?
No, I think this is our maximum outlay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll move approval and authority to execute a contract in the amount of $66,070 with Bargman, Hendry and Archetype in connection with the renovations to the Evelyn Coraine Aquatic Center. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
I just want to say thank you to all the selectmen that were involved with my committees of seven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm now going to, with apologies to the department heads and other town staff who were here for some of the miscellaneous items, I'm going to go to the discussion of the footbridge demolition. This is a high-impact, high-visibility project that really affects our region. It affects the hospitals at the Longwood Medical Center. It affects City of Boston. It affects the whole town and the surrounding area. So I thought it would be good for the, for DPW to brief us and brief the community on this and be available for questions from the board. And I'll take, and I'll allow questions from the public if anyone wishes to ask questions. And it's my hope that through this process, we'll be informed about the plans and we can probe and the public can probe and make sure that we've thought of all the things we need to think about. The fact that it's a high-impact project, you know, this is something we've been wanting to do for a long time. The money was appropriated many years ago at this point, or the decision to bring the bridge down was made many years ago. And people have been wondering, I've been wondering, when is it going to happen? Well, it's going to happen on Columbus Day weekend. So, Mr. Ditto.
Good evening. Before we get rolling, I'd just like to acknowledge my two staff members here that have really done a Herculean task on this. I can honestly say that so far, there's no stone that hasn't been turned. So with that, I'm just going to do a brief introduction and then I'm going to turn it over to Steve King and Bill Smith. So as Mr. Pappas Sturgeon probably told you before, he built this bridge roughly in the early 70s.
We know he's not here tonight. It's too painful for him.
So however, it was closed in the late 90s as a result of deferred maintenance. However, the, this bridge really has to come down for two main reasons. One, the Jones Development in the village as well as the Gateway East Project. The bridge is just in the way of both of those projects. That being said, we put out a RFP for a demolition contractor and we selected NASD, which is the North American Site Development Incorporated. They were awarded, executed the contract last August 25th, and they're ready to roll. So with that, I'm just going to turn this over to Stephen and we'll take it from there.
Mr. King, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Stephen King. I'll be presenting with Bill Smith. We're going to be talking about some of the key components involved with the pedestrian bridge demolition. A brief presentation outline. Here briefly talked about some of the key components of what was going into, why we're taking down the bridge. It was built in the 70s. It's now been closed since late 1990s. Because of deferred maintenance, it's become pretty much a hazard. And it's also opening the doors for future developments at the Brookline Village area, including the Jones Hospital Development and also the Gateway East Quarter Project. I've broken into three key components that we'll be speaking about during the presentation. One is the scope of work, basically how NASD intends to take down the bridge. The second part is pretty much the most important part, is the traffic management plan, which is going to have to be a key focus for everybody involved in the project because we're going to be trying to close down Route 9 on one weekend. Lastly, obviously, is the community, communications to the surrounding communities and also public outreach to let everybody know what will be taking place over the next few weeks. And then we'll open up the brief questions and comments if necessary. So as Mr. Ditto spoke about earlier, we awarded a contract in August 2015, were executed to NASD. We've had several sidewalks with them. They're very familiar with the site now and they are on board to start the demolition process on the bridge, which will be happening in the next few weeks. So in the scope of work, I broke it down into three simple phases, stages in which NASD intends to take down the bridge. Their plan is to start work on September, the week of September 28th. This work will include encompassing the area within the red highlighted area. They'll be setting up safety fencing. They'll be staging equipment and materials. They'll be prepping the site for demolition, getting ready for Columbus Day weekend. Also, at this point, when we start setting up the safety fencing, we're going to, we intend to relocate one bus stop that's located underneath the Washington Bridge on the eastbound side to just past Juniper Street, which we've already coordinated with the MBTA. The second stage, we'll, as you can see in the pictures here, NASD intends to begin removing the south stairwell and south ramp attached to the bridge. This work is probably going to take place as soon as they've had everything set up as far as safety and barrels and cones and the site been cordoned off so the public can't get in and out of it.
So this is going to happen before Columbus Day weekend?
This is going to happen before Columbus Day weekend, correct.
Okay.
Probably that, after they set up staging that first week, the last days of September, it'll be that first week of October that they'll be working during daytime hours, basically seven to four, perhaps five.
Seven to, right, Monday, normal working hours during that week, Monday through Friday, while they're removing everything within the green highlighted section and leaving the bridge deck that overhangs Washington Street intact until they come back on Columbus Day weekend and shut down the road.
Does the bridge deck include the sundial?
The south ramp structure highlighted in green includes the sundial.
Are there any plans to try to preserve that? It's a question that's been raised, but...
With orientation and structure, there is no current plan to salvage or reboot it.
It's set up in such a specific location that in order to get it to work correctly, it'd have to almost go back in the same spot. So it, you can probably salvage some of the pieces, but you won't be able to reconstruct the actual configuration of the sundial and have it in the same spot with the work that's intended to happen because of the Gateway East Quarter Project.
Without recreating that same framework?
In the same height position, so the sun hits it at the right time. The last phase, stage, which is the most important stage.
So they will have cleared all of that material that they've trucked and blamed that debris as well prior to the weekend shutdown. So that area will be cleared.
Stage three, the scope of work, NASD and their subcontractor, RoadSafe Traffic Systems, will begin setting up the intended detours that will be spelled out in the traffic management plan, starting on October 9th at 9:00 PM. Not only until after we've approved and ridden the detour ourselves, we'll allow NASD to go on the streets and begin setting up for the demolition of the bridge deck and walls over Washington Street. They'll actually remain onsite beyond October 12th, but they'll be working off the road during normal working hours to dispose of all the materials they take down during that Columbus Day weekend. The intended duration of the weekend closure will be from 9:00 PM on October 9th to 7:00 AM on October 12th.
So October 9th is the Friday?
Friday night.
Friday night through Monday morning?
Monday morning at 7:00, the roads will be back open.
Both sides of Route 9 are going to be closed for this period?
That's correct.
And where's that traffic going?
That is going to be discussed in the traffic management plan. This is the most important part.
And I'm particularly concerned about the fact that there's a fire station right there and that, you know, they have to be able to answer 911 calls and...
Yes, we actually are setting up to have a separate engine, ladder and firefighter crew at the Water Sewer Division Yard on the other side of town.
The other side of the...
But they'll be stays there for the whole...
Okay, so you're moving them out of Fire Station 1?
There'll still be, there'll still be a crew at the fire station, but there'll be an additional crew that's put up at the Water Sewer Division Yard.
I see, okay.
A crew of six, four firefighters and a welder and a cutter.
Yep.
Okay.
The area highlighted in blue is what NASD will be taking down over that Columbus Day weekend.
So the housing that's right behind there, Juniper Street, emergency access vehicles are going to be able to get to those people if they need something?
Yes, yes. Juniper Street will be open for residents and any emergency vehicles. They will have to follow, we're intending for them to follow the detours that will be laid out to get to Juniper Street, which is a short route bypassing through Station Street and Kent Street and come back around Brookline Ave.
Okay.
So I believe the most important part of this whole operation is implementing the traffic management plan, since we intend to close a major corridor of Route 9 down for the entire weekend. We're obviously going to have Brookline Police and Fire details onsite during the whole demolition process. We'll have two firefighters throughout the whole weekend. We'll also have probably 10, 15 police officers for our station at the site and several other stations throughout the detour routes to assist people with any traffic concerns or questions and safety. We've set up three individual detours, which I'm naming below, the eastbound detour for residents heading into the City of Boston, the westbound detour, which will be residents heading towards the City of Newton or coming into Brookline Village from Boston. And then we'll still do in a third, Brookline Avenue, which will be considered going towards the Longwood Hospitals and Juniper Street. The first detour, the eastbound detour, we're sending all vehicles in the direction of High Street to Cypress Street to Chestnut, Pond Avenue, and then back to Washington Street. All these streets can handle heavy traffic, any trucks that normally take Route 9. As you see in the highlighted section here, they'll be coming down from the west, taking a right on High Street, following down to Cypress, then the Chestnut, around the Pond Ave, and back on to Washington. We're also going to alert residents and local businesses that they are able to use Cumberland Avenue as well as Allerton if they decide to cut through the detour. So it's not such a...
Is the, is the half marathon on the same weekend and don't they go very near there?
Yes, the half marathon is running on October 11th from 6:30 to 11:30 Sunday morning, which we have a plan in place for that on our next slide.
Okay.
Let's go back to the previous slide. Is, where are police going to be located in that detour?
Police are located with the P with the circle around it, so those will be the police details set up on that side for that detour.
Okay. And will there be signage on, for Cumberland and Allerton? No left turn by trucks? Because once people discover that you can cut, you can cut off the distance significantly by cutting down Allerton, which is a small, very downhill street, two-lane road, people are just going to do it.
Yeah, there's going to be signage for actually straight and continue on and the police officers can shift either way to make sure trucks continue on the path, you know, and let passenger vehicles down the streets. We tried to refrain from putting any trucks on those streets because we didn't, as I would, I wouldn't want any trucks coming down a residential street where there could be kids playing in the middle of the road for the day. I know those are small, tight streets in that area. That's why we chose the major route.
And Cumberland being wide, we reserve also for public transit.
So the, so the 60 bus?
66.
Oh, the 66?
The 60 bus comes down that way.
Wow.
Okay, I'm just going to say though, there's a lot of, a lot of ambulances come down Route 9 from the western suburbs, heading into the medical center. And this is kind of a long route for them. And do you have an alternative? It seems to me that, I mean, I would send them up Washington and down and Kent or something would be much quicker. I mean, you don't want people in ambulances taking the long way around, I think.
Correct, and we're going to reach out, I've already reached out to about 15 ambulances services in the area. Within the next week, I'll just reach out to their dispatchers and let them know the exact route where they're going to take and also have a copy of the traffic management plan.
But you're not expecting them to do this long loop?
No.
Okay, okay.
No, I've...
We have a Longwood Medical Area Detour Plan. This is warranted for those continuing on.
Yeah, Mr. Smith, if you're going to talk a lot, you should come to the microphone. So our vast television audience can hear you.
Next part of our traffic management plan is the westbound detour coming into Brookline Village and Newton, Mass. Washington's westbound traffic detour will utilize Brookline Avenue to Aspinal Ave, to School Street, to Cypress Street, and back to Boleson Street.
Brookline Ave.
The next slide shows the route. People coming in from Boston will take the right on Brookline Ave. They'll take the left on Aspinal Ave, continue, follow that all the way to the intersection of School, Aspinal Ave and Harvard Street, at which point, if they want to come into the Village, they can be directed with detour signage into the Village or to get to the further lower down Route 9. Or they can continue on the School Street, Cypress Street, and back on to Route 9 further up west. I'd also like to, at this point, say that during the BAA half marathon, this is the westbound route, including Harvard Street, Aspinal Avenue, Brookline Avenue and Washington Street, will be used for both the eastbound and westbound traffic on Sunday morning.
Give that to me again?
During the BAA half marathon, which runs on Sunday morning from 6:30 to 11:30 AM, both the eastbound and westbound traffic on Route 9 will be... both the eastbound and westbound traffic on Route 9 will be diverted to Harvard, up Washington, to Harvard Street, to Aspen Wall Avenue, back to Brookline Avenue. So that'll be for both directions.
Excuse me, so the marathon is starting where and in?
It starts in Franklin Park. It's going to run up the Jamaica Way.
It goes on Pond Ave, though.
Yes, it comes back on the return, on the return route, the last four or five miles is on Pond Ave. And it's only a half marathon, so I've already spoke with the BAA. They're pretty confident that everything will be off the road and cleared by 11:30 on Sunday morning. All the water stops, all the barricades, all the runners. If runners are still running, they're going to push them to the sidewalk and open the road back up.
So can you walk me through why we're doing a detour to the detour for that limited time on Sunday morning? It would seem to me that we'd want to set up a predictable path for the entire duration of the closure for the westbound traffic, or the eastbound traffic, excuse me.
Yeah, the amount of volume that comes down Route 9, I don't believe can handle both Harvard Street, Aspen Wall, and Brookline Ave. That's why we tried to divert it, so that we're not taking the full run of Route 9, trying to take a left through Brookline Village and make its way back on the Brookline Ave. Especially for the Saturday, the Saturday traffic is going to be the big one.
I think that what he's saying is the sheer volume of both directions-
I understand.
-down Harvard Street is too big.
And I'm not advocating for that, but it's, you know, you set up something on Saturday, and then on Sunday morning, you say, "Hold on, we're actually going to change this again." And then Sunday afternoon, you go back to the old plan. It seems as though you're setting up a recipe for confusion and problems.
Is it possible to change the marathon route?
No, they've actually already had to change their route due to the Casey Overpass being taken down. So we did ask that question, and they've had it all measured out for the 13.1.
We actually already authorized them to use that route on that date.
I do understand the concern. NASD has been pretty confident that they'll be able to get everything out by Sunday morning early, probably before 6:30. They move pretty quickly, so I'm hoping we don't have to come to that point. But again, with the amount of detail officers will have on-site and the signage, I think it will be easy transition, just for that morning where traffic is really light on a Sunday on Columbus Day weekend, that we'll be able to work with it. Last is the residents on Juniper Street and also Brookline Ave. We're going to be using all vehicles. We use Washington Street, Harvard, Aspen Wall, Brookline Ave, pretty much the same as the westbound route, just going in reverse direction. We're also going to let these residents know that they can use Kent, Station Street, Kent Street, and Aspen Wall Avenue to Brookline Avenue to come back to shorten the length of the detour, so they can circumvent going all the way up through to Brookline Village and come back down Aspen Wall Avenue. At this point, we are going to have to have residents on Juniper Street entering through the west, the eastbound lane, coming from Brookline Avenue with the assistance of traffic lane markers and police details. So people coming eastbound, they'll take the left on Washington, take the right on Station, follow up to Kent Street, Aspen Wall, and back down the Brookline Avenue. For residents on Juniper Street coming from Boston, they can come all the way up into Pearl Street, loop back around Pearl Street on the Brookline Ave, and then come in the same directions as they would if they were coming from the west. The next biggest part of the traffic management plan is the rerouting of free bus routes that use the, right now are using the bus stops underneath the Washington Bridge. The buses are the 66 to 65 and the 60 bus routes. So we are going to be relocating during the Columbus Day weekend, two bus stops that are located at the bridge. They'll be relocated to the Brookline Village T-stop. We'll have inbound pickup on the Station Street side and the outbound pickup on the Pearl Street side. Here's the 60 bus route as it is during the construction on Columbus Day weekend. The fluorescent pink is the inbound and BA detour. It will follow, it comes in from High Street, it will follow over Route 9, take the right on Station Street. It will pick up and drop off at the Station Street relocated T-stop, continue on Kent Street, take the right on Aspen Wall, and back to Brookline Avenue.
Oh, my God.
Where then continue on to Boston. On the reverse, coming from Boston, it will follow Brookline, it will follow Washington Street all the way to Pearl Street, take the right into Pearl Street, drop off, pick up at the relocated bus stop, circle back on the Brookline Ave, come up Pond Ave, take the right on Cumberland, and continue on its way up High Street. 65 bus, all three buses will basically be taking the same inbound and outbound direction. 65 comes in from Washington Street. We'll have to take the left on Station Street, follow on to Kent, then continue on to Aspen Wall Ave, Brookline Avenue, and continue on its way towards Kentmore. On the return route, it will come all the way down Brookline Avenue, turn into Pearl Street, loop around, come back on the Brookline Avenue, come up Pond Ave to Cumberland, take the right on High Street, follow back over Route 9 and up Washington Street. And if it seems that this is kind of a roundboat way, it's, we're trying to eliminate removing a lot of bus stops, keeping the same bus stops as they are now, so people will still be able to access where they normally go for pickup or drop off at the bus. The 66 bus route comes in from Harvard Street, will follow down Harvard Street to Station Street, again going to Kent, Aspen Wall, and Brookline Avenue, then continue on its way to Boston. It also on its return trip on the outbound side, will come into Pearl Street, loop around Pearl Street, back to Brookline Ave, up Pond Ave, Cumberland and Kent Street, Cumberland and High Street, and then continue on its way to Harvard Street. We'll be picking up the remainder of the passengers. Again, we are in conflict with the BAA half marathon, so we are intending to change the route from 6:00 to 12:00 on Sunday. The 65 bus does not run. The 66 and 60 bus does run on Sunday. We've coordinated all three detour routes, including this alternative for the MBTA with their supervisors, so they are aware, and they'll be handing out bus drivers, all the bus drivers' maps of which direction they'll be taking, for which route they're running. So all the inbound routes do not change on that Sunday. Only outbound routes will change. All the outbound routes were previously used in Pond and Cumberland. They will now turn into Pearl Street, take the left on Brookline Ave, take the left on Aspen Wall, and then they will come to the intersection of Harvard Street, School Street, and take either the right for the 66 to head back towards the Alston area, or the 60 to head back to High Street. The last part of the plan is pedestrian detour. Both sides of sidewalks will be closed for that Columbus Day weekend. We're going to have pedestrians use the path that's highlighted in green. The orange slash is the construction zone, so residents or pedestrians coming from the west can cross over Washington Street on Bolson Street, cross over to Washington Street, walk around the Station Street, and come back over the T-stop through Pearl Street, and they continue on to the Brookline Ave, Washington Street intersection where they can cross back over. We've walked this path, we've walked with MBTA, everything's fully accessible for everybody. Everything's up to code, so there's plenty of traffic lights. There'll also be police details on-site, as well as MBTA details to assist people in finding any bus stops that they might be confused of what's going on for the day. And again, on the reverse, people coming from the Boston side will be just instructed to cross over Washington Street at the Brookline Ave intersection, continue on the way to Pearl, cross over the T-stop, the Brookline Village T-stop, back on the Station, down to Washington, cross over Washington, and back to Route 9. This way, we have, the site will be secured. We won't have any people walking through the site or close to the construction during the demolition. Last part of this is the public outreach and communication we've been involved with since June. We've obviously been working with the Brookline Police and Fire Department. They've been a great help in assisting with any questions that we may have regarding shutting down roads, or doing the detours, or setting up police details. We've obviously been in contact with the Brookline Health Department to make sure that we're doing everything correctly and safely for public health during the demolition. This does create some noise. It is going to create some dust, which we kept down to the minimum. Now, obviously, there'll be a lot of construction equipment around on that weekend. We've also been in contact with the Brookline Housing Authority to let them know, keep them up to date on where we're at as far as our sequencing for the demolition, the time it's going to take place, how long we're going to be there. Any information or any questions they have, we've been right there to answer and inform. As well as, we've also spoken with the surrounding communities. We've spoken with the Boston Police Department and the Boston Traffic Division. They're well aware of what's happening over the next several weeks. Mass U State Police has also been alerted to the project, so they'll be well aware of our road closure for that weekend and any detours that we'll have on-site and available to them. As I mentioned to you before, we've spoken with numerous local inventory services. We'll basically be sending out a release to all their dispatchers, so for that weekend, all the drivers will know exactly where Route 9 is shut down, what detour they can take to get to the Longwood Hospital area, or to get to the VA Hospital, or the Baptist Hospital. But aside from this project, there's also numerous authorities that we've had to contact in regards to utilities and transit. We've spoken with the DCR, we've reached out to MBTA and Mass DOT. They've been very helpful in assisting us with the detours and the signage. Masco has been a great help in alerting their hospital areas, their residents, and their shuttle services for that weekend that will be closing Route 9 down. As also the BAA, we spoke with them on numerous occasions to make sure we're all on the same page of when the race is going to start, and the race is going to finish, when we can open the road back up to continue on a detour if we need it. And obviously, any of the utilities that are involved, that would be in the roadway, national grid, and ever-source electric and gas that run in the road. We're also planning on sending out press releases to all the local news and radio stations.
Aren't there underground cable and stuff like that in there?
Yes, Comcast, Verizon.
Have you reached out to all of them?
All of them are going to be alerted due to a mandatory dig safe that we have to do.
Okay.
I don't see any of the radio stations listed, WBUR, WGBH, WBZ.
They are, they have been reached out to. I have reached out to them. They're just not on this specific list, but that's why I kind of call out local news and radio will be contacted.
Is there going to be a designated press contact?
I've reached out to all the editorial.
No, from the town.
Thanks for volunteering.
Yeah, obviously, we're going to send another notification to all the residents and butters.
Real cell number.
Just kidding, just kidding.
On the town website.
It will be on, everything will be posted on the town website. We'll be updating the Brookline Facebook and Twitter page. We'll be sending out notices in the Brookline tab.
Are we going to have signage on Route 9 and other locations, alerting the motoring public in advance to stay away?
Yeah, I think you should have signs back by Cypress, like back-
No, further, like in Chestnut Hill.
So that people have, you know, can figure out what their options are before they get right up to the point of no return.
And if we can work with the city of Boston to put some signage, say, on Huntington Avenue in Boston, I think, you know, one strategy is to try and move the traffic, you know, around the area, and the roads, as I see the map where we're taking the traffic to, we're taking them on to one-lane roads not meant to handle, you know, the volume of traffic normally handled by Route 9, so that, you know, that's one strategy, and we have to have that strategy. The other strategy is to try and minimize the traffic coming through the corridor, and I think if we get, try to get the word out that you really want to stay away from here, that would reduce the-
We'll be working with NASD's subcontractor, Road Safe Traffic Systems. They'll be mobilizing much by message boards into town. We'll set them up on Brookline Ave, we'll set them up in Brookline Village, we'll set them up further up Route 9, we'll set them between Boston, and then on the south side near High Street. So everybody coming into that area will at some point see the variable message boards that we have set up.
So I have two questions related to emergency vehicles and public outreach. I don't see the hospitals listed on there, and I'm particularly-
It's Masco.
Masco.
Masco is-
Mass Association of Hospitals.
Right, that's the lobbying and the transportation arm. It's not the emergency rooms. I'm thinking particularly of Children's Hospital, who runs their own transport services for patients. Are they going to be aware that they can't go down Route 9?
Oh, yeah, all the hospitals. We're going to be reaching out, like I said, the veterans, the doctors, childrens.
I see the fire chief is here, and I wonder if we can hear from him about our own emergency response during this time.
Let me ask another question that relates to emergency services, and I think particularly to fire. You appear to have reached out to local ambulance services. There are a number of communities west of Brookline that run municipal ambulance services, and I'm wondering if they're going to get the word somehow.
I'm hoping through all, I mean, I'll reach out to everybody. I've tried to reach out to everybody.
I saw Needham bringing an ambulance through just yesterday, so.
Needham, Places from Lynn, Places from London, Walsley, New Walsley. Everybody that's in this area that could potentially bring a patient into the hospitals, we're going to try and get the word out to them, make sure they know. That's why we're going to post it on radio, TV, newspapers, our own webpage, letters, pamphlets, anything we need to do to get the word out, let them know that this construction's going to be happening that weekend.
I think that the chair hit upon a good point here about putting a signboard on Route 9 in Chestnut Hill, perhaps before Hammond Street, so that people could, who were planning to come in all the way in downtown even, could cut over on Hammond to Beacon Street and go that way. I mean, I think that that would really help to reduce the flow. I would certainly appreciate that as a motorist, you know.
Absolutely, yeah, that's why we mobilize the variable message boards, mark screens, they'll have three phases of messages on, alerting residents prior to construction. We'll start setting those up at the end of-
Did you mention that there were going to be five of those?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear that there was one as far out as Chestnut Hill.
Is five enough?
If five is not enough, we can get more.
So where are they going to be?
We'll put one on Brookline Avenue.
Where on Brookline Avenue?
Close to the Boston line, Boston-Brookline line. Put one on the Huntington Street side, the Mission of Boston, obviously. We'll put one on the High Street side, coming into the bridge.
So that's, with those, you're catching traffic that's already ensnared in this mess. So that's three that, what you're telling them is, the traffic jam that you're in, here's why.
Is it going to be before? No, that'll be before. We'll have a phase of seek alternate route set up.
Okay, so that's three. Where else?
We have Brookline Ave, Village, High Street, and we can put two further up on Route 9 coming in from the west.
Okay, I would suggest one-
We talked about Huntington in the study, but coordinating with the city of Boston.
And I would suggest Harvard Street, like, which corner, because you're going to have traffic coming down Harvard into the Village that you're not covering, because, you know, as soon as, the detour's going to take them to Aspen Wall and Harvard.
Harvard at school and Aspen Wall.
Excuse me?
Harvard at school and Aspen Wall.
But you want one, you want to catch them, you know, any traffic before-
Again, these signs are intended to be in advance of construction, alerting people to-
to, to the fact that there will be construction that weekend, and hopefully we'll have people avoid the area altogether.
So I believe if you're normally coming down from Beacon Street, from Washington Street into Brookline Village, at some point you're either going to use Aspen Wall to get to Brookline Ave, or you're going to continue on to Route 9, go underneath the bridge as it is now, and continue on the way towards Boston. So if we can set up a variable message board in the Village that can capture Washington Street and Harvard Street coming into the Village, I think that'll be fair enough for them.
Here's something to look into, and I don't know the answer, it may sound crazy. A lot of people use Google or Google Maps for GPS and directions, and a lot of the time, it'll alert you that there's construction here, so check into, is there a way we can notify them so that when people do their mapping through Google, that if they're doing it that weekend, it shows up, "Construction here, stay away." It's a thought. You know, anything to try and minimize the amount of traffic coming through here.
Any navigation.
It would be great.
Can, we hear from the fire chief now?
Sure. Chief Ford? Whether or not you were prepared to speak, you're being called on. And I'll also take public, questions from the public, so if you wish, get ready.
So I want to know what you think about the plans for Fire Station One there, and also, how is the dispatch going to work if you've got people in two different locations?
Well, one, I wasn't prepared, but the plan right now, as I understand, a lot of this goes through the Fire Prevention Office and my deputy chief, McEcken. As I understand it, though, once the, once the bridge is down, we can't travel down Route 9, the Village will still be, have the apparatus in it, we're going to have another crew on the other side, mainly the Brook House is a big concern, that we have somebody there right away. So there'll be another company on that side of the construction zone. Other than that, we'll be able to work our way around the neighborhoods to get to the other side, dispatch will, that will operate without any problem. With them, they'll know that the other companies on the other side are ready to go, and to dispatch them for anything on that side of the construction, and everyone else will get around the block.
Okay, and what about Juniper Street? Who, who is able to reach Juniper Street?
That's right behind, off of High and up in that area?
No, Juniper Street is right where the bridge goes over. It's-
It's on the other side of the fire station, then.
They're going to have to take that, you can get that from back behind Brookline Ave, correct?
Well, right now, you access it off Route 9, I don't think there's any other way to access Juniper Street than off Route 9, so that, it is very close to Fire Station One.
It's next to the Brook House.
It's between the Brook House and the fire station.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, on the other side of Walnut, so they'll have to, they're going to have to go, that company from, that's stationed on the other side, if they can get to it from their location, and then the others will have to come-
I don't think you can get to Juniper Street except off of Route 9. So that's my question, is how do those people get emergency service should they need it? And maybe one of you guys can answer this if the chief has-
But does it, does it come into Route 9, which side of the bridges are coming on?
On the Boston side.
On the Boston side, so we're going to have a company over there.
Okay.
So they'll be able to access.
So they're going to come down Brookline Avenue and then do-
I mean, it's literally right where the bridge is, the entrance to Juniper Street.
Well, it's going to have, if it's on the Boston side, though, and we have a company on that side, they'll have to maintain access to that. Any other companies will have to go up and around, like the Village will have to go up to Kent, and maybe take Station to Kent and the Brookline Ave, and to come in that way.
So the map we saw for access to Juniper Street shows vehicular access going down the east side, eastbound side of Route 9, so you're driving the wrong way down Route 9-
Right.
-for this weekend, which I assume is how the Fire Department will access Juniper Street along with personal vehicles.
Yep, that's the only way.
Okay, which page are you on?
They're not, no page numbers.
Okay.
It's labeled-
Okay, either way, we'll be able to get to it from one side or the other, we'll have to maintain access to that.
Okay.
Now, there are no, there are no houses on Juniper Street, the only issue is the-
No, there are no houses there.
There's a whole-
It's a whole apartment complex.
Let me finish my sentence, and I'll get there.
Okay.
So, the, I mean, the Brook House is not off Juniper Street.
No.
The Juniper Street co-op is-
It's, it's a, it's sort of a whole complex of a number of co-op units, or I think they've turned condo.
It's two-story housing?
Yeah, no, three-story, yeah.
Three stories.
Yeah.
And also the Walnut Street Apartments that belong to Brooklyn, the Brooklyn Housing Authority also are on Juniper Street.
Right.
But don't you have access from High Street to those?
No.
No.
Nope.
No, the-
The slide up on the screen, which is a little hard to see, but at the bottom, it shows two-way traffic to Juniper Street on the, on the, what's normally the eastbound side, so you can have westbound and eastbound traffic to and from Juniper Street onto Route 9 over there. Right, so they'll have-
Okay.
That will be the, basically, the only traffic over there, and that's what I'm saying, the east of the bridge, so we'll have a company over there, and all other companies, additional companies responding, will have to work their way around by Brookline Ave.
Where is debris that's going to be generated through this process, going to be stored over this weekend?
Debris is actually going to be removed offsite, they're going to clear that south ramp, south stairwell area, they'll remove all that that day, or that week while they're demolishing that structure. During the deck part, they'll work as quickly as they can to move the deck and walls over to the area where the south stairwell was, after they remove all that material, and then throughout the continuing weeks, once they have it opened up, they'll transport all that material offsite.
Okay, I'd like to open this for public questions, if you'd like to speak, just line up and come forward, introduce yourself.
Hi, Kelly Pope, we actually spoke on the phone.
And speak into the microphone and-
Hi, I'm Kelly Pope, I'm a direct resident of this bridge, I happen to live in one of the apartments that is closest to this bridge, and as the board will, imagine yourself as the back wall between Walnut and Juniper Street, our apartments are right there where the chief is, okay? So my question is several, basically, health and noise issues, because I know you have to go by OSHA codes, was wondering if the decibel levels have been taken for noise recently, now before the construction project starts, and what we are at, decibel-wise, and if we can have a decibel test after the bridge comes down. My concerns are twofold, because I'm having major surgery while this is taking place, and he and I have spoken about this, about emergency, my nurse being able to get to me on Juniper Street without issue, about the ride being able to get up, because there's a number of people that rely on other transportation modes in that area. There's about 70 people that will be directly affected by facing the bridge, and most of them are elderly or disabled, and we haven't been spoken to at all. My phone call to Steven shed a lot of light on the situation. So I have a question about the asbestos that's in the wiring, and how that, the dust from that isn't going to affect her health, how the noise pollution isn't going to affect our health, the dust, how that's not going to affect our health, so I'd like those to be answered.
You know, I really think you ought to have a meeting there in the Juniper Street area, or, I don't know, perhaps-
Juniper Walnut and High Street areas.
Yeah, I think the High Street Housing Authority building may have a public room that you could use for that, that would be convenient for everybody.
I know that, didn't you meet today with the Brookline Housing Authority, that you guys have a private meeting today with them?
Uh, no, that was through, yes.
Yeah, you might want to have a meeting with-
Yeah, I think people need to know these questions, because she's right, a lot of people there do use-
We do, but we're not giving answers, that's why I'm here tonight, because this is starting very soon, on the 28th, and not the weekend, and also, you want to keep us up over 90 hours, sleep deprived, to take the bridge down. How would you guys feel like staying up for 90 hours with jackhammers?
It's not going to be good.
It's not going to be good, but we all wanted to come down, so we're all trying to work together, but I do want those, those critical issues addressed, the asbestos, and what you're doing to protect us as residents there, because we are the closest to the project.
Yeah, I would, I would have a public meeting there at, maybe at the High Street, if they have a, I think they'd have a room you could use, and invite the Health Department along to adjourn, because I, you know, it's understandable that people would have a lot of concerns that are right there by this.
Can this be something that you would be attending to?
And there's another hearing next week about the noise bylaw waiver, so just be aware of that.
Is that on the agenda for the decibels to be taken now while the bridge is up? Because, I mean, in our bylaws, and I read them before I came here, we do have strict rules about what the decibel levels are supposed to be for city noise, when that, when that bridge comes down, right now it acts as a sound barrier, and it keeps things pretty quiet back there in the residential area, but when it comes down, you're going to open that up a lot more, and decibels are very interesting, because you just go 10 decibels higher, and that's actually doubling the-
Yeah, but that's not going, that's not going to invoke the noise bylaw.
Yeah, the issue is that this demolition is going to exceed our-
It's going to probably exceed what OSHA even requires.
I can just interrupt for one second, the contractor has assured me, and he'll, he'll speak on this more, on the noise bylaw waiver, public hearing.
And when is that?
A week from tonight.
That the decibel level, even at nighttime, we've been, the limits, et cetera, forth, in our town bylaws, it's 95 decibels.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else with questions, comments? You know, obviously, we on the board are taking this very seriously, you know, this, I think this is going to have a major impact on the Village, certainly going to have a major impact on my neighborhood, so we're, I know Sleckman Franco and I are going to be directly affected by this, so we'll be watching, and I think the whole region is going to be watching this, because this is really going to affect the region, so I think we need to do everything we can to minimize, let, let the region know that this is happening, and try to get people to reroute themselves so they don't come through this area.
But let me ask the lady from Juniper Street, I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name. Yeah, now, if they set up a public meeting in the area so people could come, do you, do you guys have an email list or a way of letting everybody know?
We do have, as president of the Tennis Association, but also Brookline Housing, and you contacted Matt Veronese, or, and Neri, who manages 22 High and the Walnut Street Apartments, as well as the co-op residents here from Juniper Street.
Right.
There are two separate-
Right, I understand that, I'm, I know the Housing Authority has ways to get the word out, I was wondering about you guys, so.
Right, and I'm sure people from the Brook House would probably like to come too, but we're directly involved.
Yeah, I know the Brook House has a meeting room.
Yeah, so, I mean, we do have, not a very big conference room at 22 High, but we do have a conference room, it's not very big.
Well, yeah, I think Neil had a good suggestion, too, I know, I think there's a public room at Brook House that maybe they would let you use, so that's another possibility, but anyway, so, I just want to make sure, though, that this is, we're kind of short notice asking them to set up a meeting, I want to make sure that the word can get out to, to people in your complex, that-
It would have to be coordinated with Steven and BHA and Juniper Street, we've got letters.
Okay, can you, can you make sure, somebody gives Mr. Ditto or one of these gentlemen the correct contact person, that, so that you guys can get the word, and, yeah, for Juniper Street.
He has it for the Walnut Street, and for 22 High, and for the Brook House, so we just have to get the Juniper co-ops-
Right.
Okay.
On the R2, and then we'll do a meeting.
Yeah, and that has to happen quickly.
And he has a health department to answer his questions.
Right.
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay, Sleckman Franco?
So I have two final questions. We heard at the beginning of the presentation that work is going to start on the 28th of this month, I'm wondering if, as part of that work, we're going to close the sidewalk that runs between High Street and Juniper Street on the eastbound side of Route 9. It's the sidewalk literally right in front of the, where the stairs are.
Here's the area that the contractor will be setting up safety fencing along, so the fencing will pretty much run along, it'll probably be within the, just the backside of the parking lot, that's at the Brookline Housing Authority on the southwest side.
Yep.
And then they'll be taking up the sidewalk on the eastbound lane for the duration.
Okay, and then my second question relates to the transportation management plan that we went over. Has there been any consideration or thought given to introducing parking restrictions on the streets that are going to be affected in order to free up capacity on the streets to handle what will likely be increased traffic?
We have discussed taking a few spots, both on Station and Pearl Street for the buses, so they have an easy drop-off and pick-up location.
How about on Kent?
With Pond Avenue, you know, with the, the speed bumps, it can get mighty tight if you've got a truck going down there.
Yeah, think about that, we should study that, because I think road capacity is going to be a big problem.
I think that's why we also pretty much chose the Columbus Day weekend as well, because we're hoping to limit the amount of traffic that's normally on-site or in Brookline for a weekend, hoping a lot of people go away on a long vacation, or, you know.
Yeah.
But yeah, we can.
Gentlemen, this is a big project, and so, let's continue the communication, and we have another hearing next week, you'll have the meeting with the abutters, the Juniper Street area abutters, and we just need to really execute our media plan and get the word out, that stay away. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. So now I'm going to go back to our calendar.
Agenda item I, I believe.
Right, and this is the, back to our miscellaneous calendar, and this is the question of approving and executing a contract in the amount of $39,000 with Contractors Network in connection with structural repairs at Fire Station Number One.
We should, we should say to these guys, we do appreciate all your hard work.
Yes.
I know a lot of work's gone into this.
We've given you a hard time, but we do appreciate the fact that you've worked hard on it, and-
Yes, of course.
I just want to ask, I do have pamphlets that if anybody wants some further information than our content information.
Can you say that in the microphone?
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt.
If anybody would like some more information regarding the project, we do have some pamphlets and triples that are listed outside, and I have some here with myself, just so it has content information.
Can those of you who are here take, someone pass them out in your, in your building suite?
Is there a PDF of the pamphlet on the website, please?
Not yet, but I can-
Put it there, okay, thank you. Okay, now back to the, the more mundane stuff, not that any, any of the work we do is mundane, but, well.
It's very interesting, and materials that were distributed are very, very helpful.
It's all critical.
Right, question of approving, executing, I already said that, this is Mr. Giggly.
Good evening, this contractor approved by you tonight is for structural repairs of Fire Station One, it's Station Two of Three that requires structural repairs, this is for traffic coding of the three apparatus bay, two bids were received.
Mr. Giggly, can you, Mr., Mr., can everybody please move, discuss this outside, thank you, because we want to get through this meeting, it's getting late. Thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. Giggly.
No problem, thank you. The two bids were received, $39,000 from Contractors Network Incorporated, and $49,000 from Unicon, both include alternate number one, the corrosion inhibitor. So the CNI is a contractor for the P S School Auditorium renovations, and is currently under contract for the Municipal Service Center renovations.
Questions? Comments? I see a puzzled look from Mr. Franco.
I'm just wondering if this is planned to occur on Columbus Day weekend?
You know, that's a good question, no. But, but we will obviously need to coordinate with, um, the Fire Department and these folks because the fire trucks obviously have to leave the bays when we're doing this for a few days.
Yeah.
So, uh, we'll coordinate that. But this is the least of the issues when it comes to that project, I assure you.
Okay. Uh, seeing no further comments or questions, I'll move approval and execution of a contract in the amount of $39,000 with Contractors Network in connection with structural repairs at Fire Station Number One. All those in favor, say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco. Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, question of approving and executing the following amendments with HMFT, H Architects in connection with the Edward Devotion School Project. Amendment number eight in the amount of $14,729. Amendment number nine in the amount of $8250. And that's, that's it for this item. Mr. Giggly?
Yes, these two are for, uh, to further assess existing conditions at the facility as part of completion of design work. Uh, we want to do our best efforts to address any and all conditions out at the site that could potentially result in unknown conditions later on, once we're in construction. Uh, contract amendment number eight, we've done a significant amount of geotechnical investigations already on the site. Uh, this is to do, uh, work in the parking garage to primarily assess the, uh, existing connection between the, the new garage and the 1913 building because that garage is coming down, and we need to be sensitive as to how that building is shored and ultimately, uh, connected with the new addition. Also, we're, we will be in the boiler room, uh, digging some around, uh, the, uh, some footings. And again, this is for geo-environmental and structural information regarding the design of the building. Amendment number nine is to continue the, um, $8250 for hazardous materials testing and reporting. Again, to, uh, do our level best to determine existing conditions.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll move approval and execute, and execution of the following amendments with HMFT Architects in connection with the Edward Devotion School Renovations Project. Amendment number eight, in the amount of $14,729, and amendment number nine, in the amount of $8250. All those in favor, say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. You again?
Me again.
Uh, question of approving change order number eight in the amount of?
I believe that's a typo, Mr. Chairman, it's an ad of $198.56.
Okay.
Net ad.
To be completed by Lambrian Construction Corp. in connection with the old Lincoln School. So it's, it's a series of, uh, changes which nets out to, uh, an increase of $198.
And 56 cents, right.
And 56.
And it's, it, as you state, Mr. Chairman, it's a, there's a, there's a, there's a, a collection of credits for masonry work and added work for, uh, plaza deck demolition, and, uh, there's, there's $4,000 to install a muffler to the existing ductwork on air handling unit one. This is to address some of the noise issues that I talked to you about in the recent past, and.
There's a bunch of other items that, any questions about these items?
The replacement of the door between the Vice President's, Vice Principal's office, excuse me, aspires to be the Vice President, uh, and staff caught my attention. I'm just wondering if there's anything unique about that door, given, uh, the unexpectedly high cost?
No, that was the cost that was recommended by the architect, recommended by the contractor and reviewed by the architect for this work. It was a request of the School Department.
Okay.
Remember the Vice Principal's the one who yells at the kids who are, been misbehaving, so I suppose this has to be a.
We need to be doors.
I was very well behaved, so I have no experience with getting yelled at by the Vice Principal.
Any other questions? Okay, therefore I'll approve, I'll move approval of the change order in the amount of $198.56 for work completed by Lambrian Construction Corp. in connection with the old Lincoln School renovations. All those in favor, say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Next item is question of awarding and executing a contract for the Practice Center at the Lynch Municipal Golf Course in the amount of $1,068,865 with NMP Golf Construction Company of Williston. Mr. Ditto?
That's Williston, Vermont, by the way.
Williston, yeah, yes, sorry.
On August 30th, I meant, sorry, August 20th, we, um, opened bids for the above-mentioned project that you just mentioned. We had six responses, of which NMP Golf Construction was the lowest. His base bid was $1,068,826.65. There was an alternate put in this, uh, proposal also, and that was to, uh, in the driving, the hitting area, there was a gravel base underneath the synthetic turf, and that was the, uh, the cheapest way to go. With the bids, the way they came in, the alternate, which was to replace the granite, I mean, the gravel with concrete, uh, we decided to, we elected to take that alternate. So the total project cost is $1,068,865. The work in this contract consists of constructing an eight, approximately 850-foot by 360-foot driving range with 180-foot by 20-foot synthetic tee area. There will be five, six Tiger Greens which could be used for mini par-three tournaments when the range is not being used. Netting will surround approximately 70% of the range. A new cot bridge will be constructed in order to access the relocated T1, uh, first tee. That will be at the approximate location of where the original bridge was that was removed. A detention basin downstream from the range will be constructed to handle all storm auto runoff on-site. The low bidder was determined by the lowest base bid, not including the alternate, of which NMP Golf Construction was low. The Department of Public Works recommends that this contract be awarded and executed to NMP Golf Construction of 25 Bishop Ave., Williston, Vermont. We did check out his references, and they all came back fine.
Mr. Ellis, we never see you here. So, uh, I'll give you the opportunity to tell us briefly about the project.
Yes, um, obviously a great addition to the golf course, a great added service to the community. You know, one of the things we, we, that has been a challenge at the golf course is, one, being a self-funded entity is trying to get creative in finding other ways for, let's say, non-traditional golf revenues. Uh, if we have a bad month, for example, it can really set us back financially. So, you know, in the last few years, we've been getting a little bit creative in ways that we can, um, bring in, uh, that non-traditional golf revenue, and obviously this is one way to do it. Secondly, um, we have years of deferred maintenance at the golf course. Um, a lot of projects on the golf course that, let's say, have been put on the back burner, for example. Um, we have a, a lot of clubhouse renovation work that needs to be completed, and without a substantial, um, let's just say, another revenue stream coming into the golf course, um, you know, we can only chip away at those projects annually. So, in looking at this, um, you know, we really see that, um, this is certainly a great benefit for the golf course and the future success of the golf course and the community.
So walk me through where this is going to be at the golf course.
Yep, so right now the proposed site is, if you've been to the golf course, you know where the We met statue is, for example. So directly up that, probably just behind the first set of trees, will be the artificial tee. You won't be able to see it from the main, uh, main road or from the circle when you pull into the golf course. From there, you would hit out towards, um, across our existing first tee, and then, um, which obviously is going to be moved, and the old maintenance building would, um, be the back end of the driving range. So if you were playing the ninth hole, for example, it almost runs parallel to nine or parallel to the parking lot, for example.
And the, the chipping and putting green that's sort of down that path where the first tee is, is going to be uninterrupted remain as it is today?
No, that will not remain. That will be part of the range. The challenge there, what we have is the front part of, uh, the current first hole, we have plans to actually, let's say, rebuild a short game range in that area.
Not being a golfer, I don't even, I don't understand a word of that.
I know.
I assume the cost of this is being absorbed by the enterprise fund?
Exactly, it is 100%.
If you guys want it.
Ready for a motion?
It's coming out of the enterprise fund, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Do you? Do you use it?
Do you have a sense of, uh, demand for this facility in the, in the Boston area?
We do. Um, I would have to say that there's, there, I mean, I know there's a shortage of driving ranges in the area. We did an extensive, uh, study with the National Golf Foundation, and, um, you know, we feel that their numbers are conservative on it. Aside from, let's say if we do have the driving range, aside from us, you have McGuffin Denham. And other than that, um, I want to say Weston has a driving range there at Leo J. Martin. And then the only other one would be Granite Links in Quincy. We get calls daily asking if we have a driving range. And obviously, they're not customers of ours yet, so, you know, it's pretty impressive.
Okay, well, it sounds like there's a potential market.
Very much so.
Yeah, okay. So I will move, uh, awarding and executing contract for the Prac, Practice Center at the Lynch Municipal Golf Course in the amount of $1,068,865 with NMP Golf Construction of Williston, Vermont. All those in favor, say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Bring us new customers, we like that. And the next, uh, is the question of awarding a contract, of executing a contract, uh, sewer rehabilit, uh, system rehabilitation in the amount of $2,200, $2,221,480 with DeLisandro Corp. of Avon said contract was awarded by this board on August 25th, and that's why this thing sounds familiar. Thank you, Mr. Ditto.
Yeah, um, this is a maintenance contract, a, with this, we're going to line 18,530 feet of various size sanitary sores. We're going to do, uh, spot repairs at eight locations where they involve just a cut and cover. And then we're going to, uh, also rehab approximately 1,400 vertical feet of manholes.
Okay, we've already awarded this contract, this is just a motion to, so that we actually can sign it. So I s, will therefore move it, um, that we can execute the contract, sewer system rehabilitation in the amount of $2,221,480 with DeLisandro Corp. of Avon. Said contract was already awarded by the board on August 25th. All those in favor? Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you.
I want to congratulate Mr. Ditto on giving us the largest contract of the night in terms of volume.
Right.
I caught, caught wind of it or saw it in the back room, and it's.
We have a number of temporary wine and malt, malt beverage license and all kinds alcoholic beverage licenses, and a permit to serve alcoholic beverages on town property license. So what I'm going to do, if there's no objection, uh, I've reviewed all of the licenses. The police department has no objections. They all appear to be in order. I'll take them all in an omnibus fashion. This will be a bit of reading, so please bear with me. So I will move granting a temporary wine and malt beverage license to Pine Manor College in connection with the following events to be held at 400 Heath Street, a wedding on October 3rd from 6:00 to 11:00. Gosh, Quincyanera on November 14th, 2015, 5:30 to 10:30, and a donor recognition dinner on December 1st, 2015, from 7:00 to 9:00. Those are items nine, N. Items O, we'll move granting a temporary all kinds alcoholic beverage license to Pine Manor College in connection with the following events to be held at 400 Heath Street, a b'nai mitzvah on October 17th, 2015, from 6:00 to 11:00, a bat mitzvah from Octo, on October 24th, 2015, from 11:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., and a wedding on October 24th from 6:00 to 9:00 to 11:00 p.m., and a wedding November 7th, 2015, from 5:00 to 10:00. Then item P, I will move granting a permit to serve alcoholic beverages on town property, non-sales Lars Anderson Auto Museum in connection with the following events to be held at 15 Newton Street, a wedding reception September 26th, 2015, 5:30 to 11:00, wedding reception October 2nd, 2015, from 5:30 to 11:00. And lastly, item Q, I will move that we grant temporary all kinds alcoholic beverage license to the Hellenic Association of Boston Enunciation Greek Orthodox Cathedral of New England in connection with a wedding to be held on Saturday, September 26th, from 7:00 p.m. to, to 1:00 a.m. at 162 Goddard Avenue. All those in favor of all those motions, please say aye. Sleckman Daley.
Aye.
Sleckman Franco.
Aye.
Sleckman Heller.
Aye.
Sleckman Green.
Aye.
Okay, back on track. A little late to our main calendar, I apologize, but I think it was important that we spend the time on that demolition project. So, uh, the next item is library personnel. Ms. Slimon? This is a question of authorizing the filling of a vacancy in the position of library assistant two in the library department. Sorry to keep you waiting.
That is okay. I think I might just ask Patty to put me on every week at the rate I'm going. So I'm Sarah Slimon, I'm the library director. Thank you for your time tonight. Uh, we have a new vacancy, a library assistant two at the Putterham branch that I would, uh, ask that you authorize me to fill, please.
Questions?
Yeah, I have a question. On item 11, uh, you talk about suggested sources for specialized recruiting advertising. I was wondering if you, uh, post notices like this and whether other town agencies post notices like this, uh, within newsletters or bulletin boards at public housing facilities?
No, we do, that's not current.
I think that that'd be a useful place to, to solicit, um, persons to apply for jobs like this.
I believe the Human Resources Department handles all the distribution, so that might be something, um, I could suggest to them.
Um. I see the Human Resources Division is rising.
So this is a difficult question for department heads to answer all the time because they don't know all the wonderful things we do.
But you're not here, so I have to ask who's here.
So I'm, so I'm here, so, so I just wanted to let you all know that, and remind you that there's a blue book that we use, um, and we have hundreds of contacts, of which, um, the Brookline Housing is one of them. Um, and we have a listserv set up, Lloyd has set up a listserv through them. We also, um, have a new contract with the Professional Diversity Network that is very expansive and cover, and they, um, what they do is they call it scraping our website. So they, they then post everything that we have posted out into the world with a lot of professional groups and different organizations. And so for the higher level positions, um, we would go into the professional journals and such. Uh, but at this level, it's just our regular, very broad pool that we use, so.
Thank you for that update. Any other?
Any other questions, comments? I'll therefore move, what am I moving? The, that we authorize the filling of a vacancy in the position of library assistant two in the library department. All those in favor? Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. The next item is the question of appointing the following, I'll let the chief introduce the candidates, but these are candidates for firefighters, so.
Correct. Chief. And I don't have the candidates here with me tonight.
Aren't these the same group you brought?
Yes.
Last week.
You just met them.
Yeah, we met them just a couple of weeks.
August 4th.
Yeah.
I brought them here with me, and that was when we came before you for conditional offers of employment. They have succeeded and met all those conditions, and I'd like to say it went off pretty much without a hitch, which is good. So now I'm here before you for the actual offers of employment. I would ask, I respectfully ask that the effective date be 9/14, Monday, and it's all the same individuals that were here before you. Robert Amendola, Bolari Camille, Michael Harrington, Spencer McWilliams, Francis Malory, Leah Shatkin, and Marvin Oliveros. So they're beginning their 10-week recruit class, and we're looking, we'll follow with them.
Great.
Any questions, comments? Okay, then I'll move that we appoint the following candidates as firefighters. Robert Amendola, Bolari Camille, Michael Harrington, Spencer McWilliams, Francis Mahoney, Leah Shatkin, Marvin Oliveros, and this would be effective 9/14, you said.
14.
Okay.
Yes.
2015. All those in favor? Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Okay. The next item is item nine. We're only 55 minutes late, so I apologize. This is the question of proving the application of, you're going to have to pronounce it for me, La?
Voual.
La Voual. Brookline Inc., DBA La Voual. Alfred Pierre Honiger, manager for common vitular license at 1627 Beacon Street, and this is also going to be a public hearing on the application for a all kinds alcoholic beverages license. So Mr. Barnowski?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Town Administrator, members of the board, Adam Barnowski with Law Office of Robert Allen, 300 Washington Street. With me is Pierre Honiger, the owner and the proposed manager of record, and with him is Jerome Berger, who is going to be one of the general managers there as well. Mr. Honiger will be the manager of the license that we are proposing. We do come before you on a request for a new Section 12 All Alcoholic Beverages License for the location at 1627 Beacon Street in Washington Square. This is the location on the corner of Washington Square and Beacon Street, across from the Green Line T-Stop there. It's formerly the location of Verne Sage Restaurant, which closed, I believe, on New Year's of this past year. They're seeking to bring in a traditional French restaurant. La Voual is French for the sale, and Mr. Honiger is a very experienced restaurant operator. He's run a restaurant also called La Voual on Newbury Street in Boston for nearly 10 years. It was recently named the best French restaurant by Boston Magazine. It's gotten glowing reviews from the Globe, and it maintains a near-perfect 4.5 stars on Yelp, which is very difficult to do. They're trying to bring some of the magic that they have at the location in Back Bay here to Brookline. About the operation, there's going to be some elements that are going to be similar to the license that was formerly held by Verne Sage. There are going to be some things that are different. I believe Verne Sage had a 2:00 a.m. license on the weekends with a midnight license during the week. What they're looking for is a straightforward noon to midnight hours of operation on the license seven days a week. The occupancy and the seating will stay the same. It's 95 seats total, spread between two floors. The general layout will also stay the same. There will be some changes to the location of the bar and some of the seating, which is all detailed in the floor print plans provided to the board. They are currently doing extensive renovations. They're really bringing this space from what was a somewhat tired space up into a very modern, world-class restaurant. It's going to look very, very nice. They hope to have construction finished sometime in October, and licenses, you know, pending, you know, pending approvals, hopefully open by the end of October, early November. About the proposed manager, as I mentioned, Mr. Honiger has a lot of experience in the alcoholic beverage industry. He's overseen the food and beverage at La Voual since it opened. They've had no citations or disciplinary matters before the City of Boston Licensing Board or the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. Pierre is a certified crowd manager, and he's tip certified both online and in person. We are also here before the board today on approval of a CV license and an entertainment license for tape music, and we're happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I did have one question, since, and I don't believe we have any information on the other gentleman who would be an alternate manager?
He may be an alternate manager. He's going to be helping to run the restaurant. He's not an owner.
Okay.
He won't be part of the license.
Okay, well, my question is, since he has two establishments, to be the manager of record in Brookline when you have a liquor license, you're supposed to be on the site. What's the rule? More than 50 percent of the time?
Whenever service is taking place, I believe. You're the sole person on the license.
Right. I believe the regulations say 40 hours a week or 50 percent of the time the operation is open, which Mr. Honiger will be. He's actually not manager of record at the Boston location.
Okay, okay, so I was just concerned about that, yeah. Well, certainly, it looks like a very nice menu.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I live in the neighborhood, so.
Yeah, this is, this neighborhood has really come alive with restaurants.
We're restaurant central, yeah.
It's like an exciting addition.
Well, you know, if you take the restaurant and the bars away, then the road and the street dies. I mean, you can only look at mannequins so often at night. It's not quite so.
So that means you're not allowed to leave now that you go in.
But if you want to know what it's going to be like, just come to La Voual in Boston, and you'll get a taste of it. It really is a French restaurant.
Great. I do want to say your predecessor at this location had some irregularities with their liquor license, and they were serving like liquor and carafs on the table that's not allowable in Boston? I mean, in Brookline, it's not allowed?
In Russia, life is a little bit different.
I guess so.
Rather difficult sometimes, you need two carafs.
And I think they also had some episode where they were selling bottles of liquor to go home with people or something like that, which is, again, not allowed here, but you've gone over, I assume, with Mr. Barnowski, all the regulations, and you talked to the police department?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, there was a, on the prior license, there was an unusual condition, that the licensee shall not leave any decanter on the table, and all alcoholic beverages served from a decanter shall be done by a weight person.
Yes, well, that's because they were not, they were violating this, that's why.
So we're not going to be putting that kind of condition?
No.
Well, the only decanting we do is when you buy a very expensive wine that you don't want, or it's not that expensive, so you decant it, and then when you see that that bottle of stuff comes through your stop, so that you have a better amount of wine back in. But that's the only, I believe.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I'm sure this has been dealt with, but, you know, we have a bylaw in town regarding the humane raising of veal. I assume you're aware of that and have dealt with that. I don't believe there's such a bylaw in Boston, so.
Well, veal is actually a, it's a difficult subject, because as a European, for instance, a veal in America is treated very differently.
Yeah.
So it's very difficult actually finding, so to have good veal dishes is difficult if you don't have the good.
Is it because the inhumane raising of veal makes them more tender and tasty?
No, it has to be.
I mean, I don't know. I was just curious.
Well, in Europe, the animals are very young there. You're going to wait until they're a bit bigger and way more, because it's a bit more fluidated. I think that's a good, the veal is not that popular in America, and that in Madrid is very popular, in France, just a little bit.
This is a public hearing, so is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this license? I see none. If there's no other questions from the board, I will therefore move approval of the application of La?
Voual.
Voual. I never took French in high school, obviously. I took Spanish.
Oh, you should come here, La Voual, there's a variety of ways you can cook it.
Right. La Voual of Brookline Inc., DBA La Voual, Alfred Pierre Honiger?
Yes.
Manager for a common vitular license at 1627 Beacon Street. All those in favor, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. I'll move approving the application of La Voual, Brookline, DBA La Voual. See, by the end of this, I'll pronounce this. Alfred Pierre Honiger, manager, holder of common vitular license at 1627 Beacon Street for an entertainment license to include tape music. All those in favor? Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I'm sorry, did you ask if anyone wanted to speak on this?
I do.
Okay.
And I'll move approval of the application of La Voual, Brookline, DBA La Voual, Alfred Pierre Honiger, manager for all kinds alcoholic beverages license as a common vitular. Is that what I'm doing? As a common vitular?
Yeah.
For all kinds beverage, as a common, okay, got it. All kinds beverage license as a common vitular at 1627 Beacon Street. All those in favor? Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Select, and chair votes aye. It's getting late.
Okay. Well, we wish you good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Or I think we should say bon chance.
Bon chance.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And now we have a board and commission interview for either the planning board or the zoning board of appeals. William Rittling, come join us. I apologize for the late hour.
No apology necessary. I was well warned that it was a big agenda, and it's certainly proved to be that way.
Okay. Well, why don't you tell us about yourself and why you'd like to be a member of these boards?
So I'm a resident of Brookline now for about 10 years. I'm looking for opportunities to be more involved in the community, planning and being part of the environment of the, of the town is something that I have interest in and would like to be involved with. I attended the planning board meeting last week and sort of got a flavor of both the board and what they deal with. It was a little different than I expected, but it certainly is a board of very smart and experienced people dealing with a lot of technical issues. But the issues were interesting to me, and, you know, we all have an interest in our own neighborhoods, and so I think that that's something I'm interested in. Obviously, my background, more in finance than in architecture or city planning, there would be a big learning curve for me to get some of that technical knowledge that obviously exists there. Hopefully, I could pick that up, and I'm sure the expertise that's there could help me on that.
Yes.
I have a question. When I read through your experience and your interest, it seemed like what you really want to be applying for is our economic development board.
So the opportunity that's open right now is with the planning board, so, you know, I threw my head in in that way.
Okay.
But yes, I mean, I'm not trying to be too dilettante on this, but those would be the two areas that obviously I think my background, maybe more in the economic development side.
Yeah, the ZBA, the zoning board of appeals, statutorily, we have certain restrictions about what kind of backgrounds we need to put people on there. One is a lawyer.
Attorneys and architects.
Yeah.
Essentially.
Generally attorneys and architects.
Yeah.
Or contractors.
Or contractors, folks involved in directly.
By law, we have to fill those slots on there.
Yeah, and the planning board, I think we have a bit more latitude, but, you know, the planning board gets into the real nitty-gritty of architectural design in addition to some of the more general planning issues.
It wasn't as much planning as I sort of, the name sort of implied it seemed to be.
Right. But that said, you know, looking at your background, I can think of a number of places where perhaps you can help us out with. I know one could be, I saw the chair of the advisory committee come in, and you should talk to him.
Okay.
There he is, fellow with Mr. Lynn Jones. That's our town, the town finance committee. You know, they're, they're looking for people with these kinds of backgrounds, and so, you know, we can keep.
I'm just thinking, before he talks to.
Yeah, they're.
I just talked to the moderator that the advisory committee.
Yeah, they're appointed by the town moderator, so, you know, that might be something you might let the moderator know of your interest.
Okay.
Right.
And.
But I think they're full right now.
Yeah, they're 30 members.
Yeah, so they're full, but I think we should certainly keep you in mind.
Thank you.
And.
We'll move on.
Any other questions?
We've got a number of applicants for both these boards, so I think we should keep going through the interview process, but I'm not, at this point, willing to discount anybody.
Right, 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 right.
We may be indicating that there are other boards or commissions you should look at, but please don't feel, at least on my part, that you won't have support.
Oh, thank you.
Right.
For planning or ZBA necessarily.
Right, especially with the impressive qualifications you have, so.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. Now we're going to be talking about the classification and pay plan, and the question of considering and possible vote on the adoption of a policy for paid sick leave for non-benefited town employees. Ms. Dubois?
Hi, my name is Sandra Dubois. I'm the human resources director for the town. This past November, the citizens of Massachusetts passed a law that required paid sick leave for employees. And the, it became effective July 1st, 2015, and the regulations governing it were released in June of, June 19th, 2015. And the reason I mention that is because once those regulations were released, we started looking at it and how it might impact our workplace. So the first thing I think you all know is that a municipality is not deemed an employer unless the law is accepted, in our case, by town meeting. So we looked at this very closely, the town administrator, the HR payroll, even to a degree, and our labor council, as to what the ripple effect would be. And the primary thing that we wanted to do was to take care of those employees who were not currently receiving any paid leave. And they basically fall into three groups. One is the less than half-time people, so anyone who works 20 hours or more is by virtue of their hours in a union, and so therefore they get prorated sick time as part-time employees. But if they're less than half-time, they are not in a union, and they do not receive any benefits as of now. We also have temporary employees. We also have temporary employees and certified seasonal employees. These are people who come and work on either a part-time or a full-time basis, but for less than six months. And we have a lot of those, for example, who work for DPW. So, what we'd like to do is to cover these people with paid sick time. And to do so, we would like to amend our class and pay plan to reflect those changes. Now, you might recall, because we brought this class and pay plan before you and have talked about it most recently, you voted some changes to it. This is the document that controls our non-union employees. So, a lot of our tea folks, the tea planters are mid-managers. We have some confidential employees, and also these part-time employees who fall outside of the collective bargaining agreements. And so, our proposal is that we would pretty much follow the law when it comes to these folks, that they would accrue one hour for every 30 hours actually worked, that the paid leave as provided in the law is capped at 40 hours, that it's carried over from year to year, that it is used for specific reasons, including domestic violence leave for employee or the employee's spouse and children. We'd like to exempt a couple people, namely poll workers who work once every couple of years, student interns who are enrolled in a program, including co-op students, and some members of boards and commissions like yourself. But other than that, we're talking about.
We're always the ones that don't get any.
It's hard to calculate your actual hours' work. But for all other, all other employees, and so this primarily affects.
Town would violate the minimum wage law if you took an hour.
Right, right, right. But you'd also be exempt.
Shucks.
So, this primarily affects the library, the crossing guards who just cross the kids in the morning, and recreation. Recreation being the biggest group of people that this would affect. It does create some administrative challenges that we've been dealing with in how to administer this efficiently. We have a lot of people come on and off, but I think that we've figured out a way to do that. The reason why we're recommending that it be addressed in this manner versus a wholesale adoption of the law is that the wholesale adoption of the law would trump all our collective bargaining agreements. And our collective bargaining agreements are carefully sculpted, very complex contracts, if you will, that we have bargained very specific terms as to when sick time can be used, you know, how much you can use for family sick, how much you can use for regular sick. We have very generous personnel, personal time. Most municipalities have a day or two. We have up to seven. So, they get four automatically every single year, and then they get an additional, they can earn an additional three. So, there would be this ripple effect with all our unions that would probably be very costly in the mere fact that we're going to be, we would be litigating a lot of the provisions. Some of the things that are different, for example, is when you can actually use sick time. So, our use of sick time is very narrow. It's when you or a family member is actually sick. And I want to just put the Americans with Disabilities and the FMLA aside because there are a whole host of rules that apply to that, but we're just talking about regular, calm and cold, if you will. As I mentioned, we have this, the significant amount of personal time that people can take. And so, for well visits, picking up your prescription at the pharmacy, you can use all that time, your personal time, for those things. Under the law, you would be able to use that time for your sick time. The biggest concern I have has to do with public safety and DPW, because one of the other differences in the law is that you can take time in one-hour increments. That is not a rule that we have here. We have some discretion among the departments, and it's not so important, for example, in my department, if somebody needed to take one hour, and we could, we could, it wouldn't disrupt the operating needs, we could just cover that person, then I would exercise my discretion and let them do that. But for DPW, when you have your folks out on, in a crew on the road, and you have to let somebody go for an hour, that's a rule that we just do not use. And it's something that we have bargained, and we monitor on a regular basis, because it really does break down these crews and is very inefficient. Another example of that is when we have public safety and they have mandated overtime, where they're forced to go to work the marathon or something, some other public safety issue. There's a big question whether you could force these people, or once you force them, whether they could take an hour off to go fill a prescription, because that would be permitted and protected by this law. Under our rules, they would have to take, you know, go fill that prescription on their personal time using their personal leave when they're not being forced to work the marathon. I mean, I could go on and on, but I think we get it.
So, what this is doing is, for the folks who don't get sick time currently, essentially, the vast, vast majority with some very narrow exceptions are going to be following the law.
That's right.
Okay.
In essence, the law. The other thing that I didn't mention.
With an addition of some personal.
Personal time, right.
Right, okay.
That's the issue.
So, we're going beyond the law.
We are.
Okay. So, the issue that's going to be facing us in town meeting is, okay, do we extend the law to the full-time employees also?
The full-time, unionized employees.
Correct. So, for a full-time employee under the law, how much sick time, if we were just to take the, just what the law says, how much sick time would we be mandated to provide a full-time employee?
Forty hours.
Forty, so, five days?
Depending.
Roughly?
Yes, roughly.
Okay. So, our employees currently get how many days of sick leave?
Fifteen.
Fifteen days of sick leave, and then how many personal days?
Up to seven, four to seven.
They get four to seven. So, we are providing them already, just personal days, we're meeting the law almost, with most of the employees, you said four to seven, and that's governed by collective bargaining, right?
That's right. They can earn an additional three if their sick time is, is fine.
Okay. So, it's four, and then with, some employees get more.
Right.
So, between the personal time and the sick time, so the personal time, they can use it for anything.
Whatever they want.
Plus, they're getting vacation time.
Right. They, I mean, there's bereavement leave. We have a lot of different types of leave.
So, it seems to me we are for, if you just consider the personal days, we're already, personal days plus the vacation days, we are well exceeding the sick time law.
Looks as if we're doing four times more than.
Yeah. For our unionized employees, we have, we have very generous benefits. I think that when the law was written, it was not written necessarily, you know, for these unionized environments, they have a lot of benefits. But that, but that's the danger of adopting the law. It trumps our collective bargaining agreements, and there's just a whole, there's a, you could call it a definition of fitness for duty, what type of documentation you provide. These are things that we have, you know, bargained over decades with. And, you know, we are by no means in the driver's seat when it comes to bargaining. I mean, the bargaining really does fall down on what are the town's operating needs and what are the needs of the different members of the various unions. And although the rules are generally the same, they are, there is a lot of difference that has, that goes, filters through, like AFSP's contract and FIA's contract, for example, so. So, we think that, you know, 75% of Brookline citizens voted this law. We think that it's meaningful that the citizenry would, in all likelihood, want all of our employees who work for us to get some sort of paid leave, and so we're hoping that we can address that in this class and pay plan.
Let me ask about a group of town employees that we haven't addressed yet.
Okay.
I'm thinking of interns.
Okay.
Who we may not pay compensation to, but certainly work in the town. Would they be covered by this at all, or is it?
Unpaid interns?
Unpaid interns.
They continue unpaid leave.
Most of our interns are paid, but they're usually getting some sort of course credit.
There are volunteers at, like, the senior center, for instance, but the interns that work in the police department and various places like that, I think, are paid for the most part.
I mean, there's usually a grant with a certain dollar amount or something that's paying them, but again, they're very temporary, they're usually, they're supposed to be engaged in a course of study and studying towards that degree.
Well, seeing no further comments.
Well, I just have a question. So, is it, it's my understanding, are you asking us to vote on this policy change? And this, you're saying it doesn't have to go to town meeting, it's something this board can vote?
The board, so, this has already gone to the HR board, and they unanimously adopted these changes for this group with the language that I had provided you. And so, what we're asking is that you adopt what the HR board adopt as well, which is the language that you have before you.
Just to clarify, the Board of Selectmen has the discretion to adopt and modify benefits for employees of the town, the non-unionized employees, and in fact, you do that every year, to some extent, you modify some benefits for non-union employees, and we're suggesting that you do this more wholesale change for paid leave policies in lieu, in lieu of the town meeting adopting the state law, but of course, we'll have to deal with that because that is on the warrant for November.
Okay. How have other cities and towns dealt with this? I realize this is a brand-new law, just approved in November of 2014, but clearly, the conversation is, the same conversation is taking place in the other 360 cities and towns across the state. Are they going?
The peers that I have talked to are not, this is not necessarily on their radar. Again, it's because generally they provide greater benefits. I think there is one town that adopted something similar, but what, it looks like what they were doing is they were providing paid sick time to their part-time employees and exempting their less-than-half-time employees, and those are the very people that we're trying to cover.
Yeah. I've also tried to find out, you know, what some cities, towns, I think it's just so new that we're pretty much leaving on this.
We're going to be a trailblazer. Okay. Do that.
So, well, I will say that I think even, even people who are only working for us, if they're regularly working for us, even if it's less than 20 hours a week, I think they should get some paid sick time too.
Agreed.
So, I think this is a good change, and I certainly don't want to upset all of our union agreements.
I think that that's an important point. I would, you know, our union employees have very generous benefits, and I don't want to signal in any way that we're going to try to diminish those or lessen them, you know. So, I would not be in favor of adopting it wholesale for that reason.
So, our position is going to be in opposition to the Warren article?
Go ahead. Okay. Well, that's my recommendation.
I mean, if we adopt this.
If we adopt this.
Yes.
When would this go into effect?
I think we're shooting for October 1st if it gets passed. So, I've talked to our payroll director, and we're making sure that our payroll system could handle this. So, our employees who have been on for some time, probably 90 days, we would create a bank for them, and then the new benefit year would start January 1st.
Yeah. You should, the policy itself, you should give it a proofread. There's a couple of, there's a couple of, there's a dangling sentence.
I, yes.
Yeah. Run it through spell check.
Yes, yes, I will.
To be clear to the board, if you adopt this policy and then subsequently, over the objections of this board and others, if the, if the town meeting adopts a state law, we would, we would then rescind this policy.
That's right.
So, we wouldn't have both.
So, at some point, we should have a good detailed discussion, in addition to the excellent discussion that Ms. Dubois provided, as to why this is a better approach.
Well, I think what she's saying, and I, I'm not sure, Nancy, that, I think your concern about, I think what they were saying was, our union employees might get something if we adopted that law. There might be some things they would like about that, and I don't know what would happen if it superseded our union agreements, then would it diminish conceivably benefits that they already have under their union agreement?
It's not a matter.
Or would it just give them the ability to take an hour off to go get their prescription, that sort of thing?
It's not a matter of diminution. It really isn't. It has to do with decades of bargaining over when you can use your sick time, when you can use family sick time, which again, we have a generous provision for family sick time, when we can order a fitness for duty. I mean, there are all these work rules that have been bargained surrounding this issue that will change and open us up to not only having to deal with the changes, but dealing with all the challenges at arbitration about what this provision means. And that's what's really dangerous. I think it's going to be really disruptive to labor relations, and we are about to sit down at the table with almost all of them. So, if there are provisions in this agreement, or in, if there are provisions in the law that they want to adopt, that they think are useful, then they can bring it forward, and then we can have a very good discussion about how that will play out into the workplace and whether that's appropriate or not.
See, what convinces me to go in this direction for the full-time employees is, okay, we have some specific rules on when sick time can be used, and the law has some rules about when sick time can be used, which is a little broader than what our, than ours, but we cover it through the personal days. So, you know, just, you know, the personal days is covering that extra dimension. So, to me, you know, we are meeting the intent of the, you know, I can in good conscience say that the town is not only meeting the intent of the, of what the voters pass, but also the, you know, the letter. But where it gets a little muddy is some of those very technical work rules, and the law covers when, when you can demand a note, which might be a little different than hours, but it's been subject to collective bargaining. It's not like we've imposed it.
Right. I mean, we've bargained when you get a medical note what it must say.
Right.
And it's very much in keeping and within the four corners of the law with regard to medical privacy and all that, but these are things that we've actually bargained. So, the ripple effect is, is pretty significant.
So, I suppose it would also be very costly if we adopted and had to rebargain.
Yes.
All of these contracts and all of these provisions. I would imagine that we would need a huge influx of dollars to cover that increased bargaining, just the amount of it alone.
Well, there would be bargaining, but there would also probably be arbitrations. That's what I would guess.
Well, I'm willing to vote on this. It seems like a good thing, and.
I'm wondering if we should hear from the proponents of adopting the law before we adopt this wholesale.
Well, are we going to have a hearing on the Warren article?
Yeah.
They're here, so it probably wouldn't hurt.
Thank you.
But it's getting, I'll just, I'll just caution that it's getting late, so please be respectful of that.
Thank you, Selectmen and Mr. Kleckner. I am Patricia Connors, and I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 3 and a co-petitioner of the. and a co-petitioner of the warrant article requesting the town meeting to adopt the new state sick time law. And it's been very informative to hear about the expectations of how this would impact town practices. And my request, especially in light of Ms. Heller's point, would be to have some numbers and figures. What I would like to see is the number of non-benefited employees town-wide in each department, including the schools. My understanding is that there is a number of town, non-benefited employees within the school department. And how many weeks per year that they work? Because the people who work for the schools are not working 52 weeks per year. And I'd like to see an estimated cost for using the proposed town policy for sick leave for non-benefited persons. And an estimated cost for using the state law for-
But for non-benefited employees, we're in effect adopting the state law. And we're adding some personal time. So we're going beyond.
Yep.
In all instances.
I'm not totally confident, based on the description that I heard earlier, that we're covering all of the non-benefited employees. That's why I would like to have an exact list of all non-benefited employees in the town and what they do. And, you know, I think that it would be very educational for the selectmen, before they take a vote on this, to have the facts and figures before them. You know, Selectman Green talked about, let's have a comparison in what the costs will be for each of these two versions. So that would be my request, Selectmen. And I think if we have more information, we can make a better informed decision. Thank you.
Yeah, but can you, do you, or, you don't have to address it tonight because it is late. But when we hear about the warrant article, I certainly would want to hear your response to the fact that the warrant article might undermine all of our collectively bargained agreements with those people who are covered. You're concerned about the people who work part-time or something and aren't in the unions and aren't being covered.
Yeah.
But if the warrant article knocks out all of our collective bargaining agreements on this topic, that, you know, that have been the subject of extensive negotiation and whatever. At some point, I'd love to hear your response to that.
Well, I, you know, I disagree with our present policy that we don't give employees sick time to go to their well visits. And that's my understanding of what is part of our collective bargaining agreements.
But we give them personal days, which covers the same thing.
In excess of what the state law would give.
Yeah.
And in excess of what most other communities give, so.
Yeah.
So whether you call it a personal day or a sick day, we give them the time.
Yeah.
Plus, we give them, that's in addition to vacation.
Well, then there's also the issue that not, everybody uses up all their sick days. You know, so how much is that costing the town? The employee's given so many sick days, but if they don't use them, then how is that costing the town?
Why should that be an issue for the town? I mean, I very seldom get sick, and I don't use my sick leave.
Right.
So what? I mean, that helps the state, but so what? I mean, what is your, what is your interest in that?
It's just, the interest is that it would give us a figure as to what exactly this is going to cost. And right now, I don't have, I don't have an understanding of that. I'm not an insider of the town. I don't have access to the books. I'm a member of the public. You know, I would like more information. I think it would help town meeting, when town meeting is going to vote on this warrant article. Why don't we get some information from you all who have access to the books, who have access to the personnel records? We need some information for clarification.
Thank you.
Okay.
Cornelia Van Der Zeele, I don't know that I have much to add to that. And in the interest of time, there was one point that Nancy Daley raised, but now I've kind of lost track of it, so I will save it for later, but.
You'll have another shot when we talk about the warrant articles. Carol.
Carol, Carol, I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 10. I'm not one of the petitioners on the warrant article. I've been following this very closely because this is an issue that's near and dear to my heart, having been a part-time worker at different times during my career. And I think that part-time workers are some of the best employees that you could have anywhere. That said, I've been following this closely. I attended the hearing of the human, is it resources, relations, whatever it is.
Resources.
And I've read the whole classification system. And my question, and I've followed it up with Ms. DeBeau about the adding of personal days for the part-time workers. I see that as a real bonanza because they, with the state law, they will not get that. The one thing that they give up by getting that is the, what is it called? Well visits, well visits. They will have to use the well visits under the personal days that are in this new document. And at this point, I guess I'm here to support your voting on this document in giving part-time workers what they've needed for years. Thanks.
Thank you.
So, yeah. I was just gonna ask quickly if we can get clarity on whether this applies to school employees in addition to town employees, or if it's just the town side of the equation?
I am just addressing the town side of the equation. I know that the school is reviewing this. They've had some pretty significant changes in their administration, and they are looking at their leave policies.
But to be clear, the Board of Selectmen doesn't have jurisdiction over that group of employees.
Nor does the HR board.
And we certainly have encouraged the school department, educated the school department, and indicated that, you know, this warrant article is coming forward. And so it would be in their interest to address it.
Well, as I said, I certainly think part-time employees should get sick time and should get the personal days. And I'm willing to vote this now. And then if we, if we want to rescind it at some time, we could. But this way, it would go into effect and they would start getting that, those benefits.
I don't see any reason to delay a vote to give the benefit to a large number of people who don't have it. And then if through the town meeting vetting process, we discover holes in the policy, or we want to expand the policy beyond what's here, we can do so. But I would, I would say, let's get this in place and let's get people starting to accrue the leave.
And we do have a listing that can be provided. I didn't want to give it to you because it has names and personal information in it. Right now, they're largely recreation, the crossing guards, library.
Well, these are the people who are gonna benefit from this.
That's right, right. So we do have that ready.
The key, the key question is, who are the employees who won't benefit from this? Who are not otherwise covered by the union agreements?
So we're talking about the interns and the board of commissioners?
Right, those are the only, to me, that's the big question.
They're all on the list, right.
Yeah, okay.
So the real, the real question, I guess, from Ms. Connor's point of view, is the school people.
Which I heard, that's a, we're not empowered to.
We're not empowered to do anything.
The school committee is.
Although we, certainly if we pass this, I would certainly suggest that we send it down to them and say we've passed it and.
They have a copy of this proposal, I can assure you.
I, my understanding is that there are employees in the police department, that the employees working here in Town Hall, many employees who work for the Department of Public Works.
Who are gonna benefit from this.
Who are gonna benefit from this.
Yeah, it would be helpful to know exactly how many and in which department, and how many hours they work. It's just, you know, informative information. And I also don't understand why, if the town is giving the schools money, that the town wouldn't have any jurisdiction over this. This is not an educational policy. I understand the schools have jurisdiction over things to do with-
That's the law.
Educational policy is the law. But, you know, that, whether someone gets sick leave or not, I don't understand why the town who gives the school, the schools money wouldn't have any jurisdiction over that.
But by that logic, we should be hiring and firing all the teachers as well. We're, they're just not, the school department employees just aren't employees of the town. And the school committee is who covers them.
Well, you know, that's, that's your position, Selectman Franco. I guess the question I have is, why would the Selectmen not want more information about who this would impact? Pardon me?
We're gonna have to move on. So I'm going to move adoption of the policy for paid sick leave for non-benefited town employees as presented to us in the memo of September 14th, 2015.
Yeah, we'll say with the necessary editorial corrections, the minor corrections.
Yeah, with, right.
Yeah.
With the appropriate spell check.
Yeah.
All those in favor, Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Last items for the night are public hearings and possible vote on the following, on warrant articles. The first one is unpaid bills. This is always a controversial warrant article. Ms. Goff, do we have any unpaid bills?
No, we do not.
As of this moment, but some might turn up.
I hope that we do not have any.
So I'm going to move a recommendation of no action on the unpaid bills article, warrant article number one. All those in favor, Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And the next item is warrant article number four, the senior work-off exemption, sponsored jointly by the Assessors' Office and the Council on Aging. Welcome.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Waschinsky. My name is Gary McCabe. I'm the town assessor and here also representing the Board of Assessors. Thank you for the time. I'd like to speak to Article Four, Special Town Meeting for 2015, where the Board of Assessors and the Council on Aging, who's represented here by Ruth Ann Dobek, have voted unanimously each to present this article addressing one of our, if not our most popular property tax exemption program. It's commonly called the Senior Tax Work Off Program. There are 30 eligible taxpayers in this program. We propose continuing with 30 taxpayers in this program. But we need to make a change in one of the components of the calculation of determining the exemption because it's based on the state minimum wage by law. And the state minimum wage in 2015 is now $9 an hour. In 2014, it was $8 an hour. The formula for this program is the state minimum wage times 125 hours work, volunteer work in various departments, which the Council on Aging coordinates, equal previously to $1,000. But with the increase to $9 in the state minimum wage, times $125, the exemption goes to $1,125. The statute says we have to either vote to increase the amount of the exemption, and that's what Article Four is asking for, or reduce the number of hours so that the exemption amount stays at $1,000. The Board of Assessors and the Council on Aging would prefer the former, which is to increase the amount of the exemption and allow our volunteers to continue to work 125 hours. Further, the state minimum wage is expected to increase by law in 2016 to $10 and in 2017 to $11. So what we would like to do is to bring this article with your authorization to town meeting and say, we would like to keep the 125 hours in place and increase the amount of the exemption as the state minimum wage increases. So that we're not reducing the number of hours, we're increasing the exemption. We think that's important. Ruth Ann?
Just to add, as Gary said, it's one of our most popular exemptions that the town offers to provide a little bit of tax relief to some of our vulnerable homeowners, especially with the override. They've seen their property tax increase, and this is a way of keeping abreast of that. The other point, while no one is required to volunteer more than their 125 hours, at least half of the people in the program continue to work way beyond their 125 hours and give back to the community as strictly as volunteers. So again, we feel that this is a small amount of money and well worth your consideration.
Question I have, are we, are we stuck with the minimum wage? Is the enabling legislation?
We are. Mr. Chairman, the law is specific in this case. It says you must apply the state minimum wage in this formula. Right, thus the problem. So we, if we take no action on this article, this program will continue to exist at $1,000 in exemption. So we would reduce the hours.
Right. I'm certainly supportive of that.
Yeah, no, I think it's very important because as Ruth Ann mentioned, you know, the seniors, many of them voted for the override this past spring, even though the benefit is directed toward the schools and, you know, sort of more directly received by parents with kids in the schools and so on.
I just wish we could up the hourly amount.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's a good point. And we could consider at some point increasing the number of hours, right?
I don't not, I don't believe we could do that.
No.
The Board of Selectmen can increase the number of participants in the program. And the amount that we use to qualify the taxpayers to be eligible for this program, it's a means tested by income. And we, our boards and your board can adjust that number. But on this matter of increasing the amount of the exemption, we have to go to town meeting. So that the town meeting, the legislative body, can decide if the rest of the taxpayers want to absorb this exemption amount. And I can give you the numbers. For fiscal year 16, the increase, the total increase in this program, which comes out of the overlay reserve account managed by the Board of Assessors, would be $3,750, the increase. In fiscal year 2017, the total increase would be $7,500. And in 2018, fiscal year 18, the total increase would be $11,250. The overlay reserve account in 2015 was $2 million. So we feel we have adequate funds to cover these increases.
Yeah, but the, as Ruth Ann said, the volunteers that are doing this, not only is it critically important to them to get this money off their tax bill, but many of them are, provide, the backbone of some of the services at the senior center, they're in other departments. Where all are they working?
Yeah, just briefly, excuse me. Again, we have slots in the library, recreation department, Town Hall, the Assessors' Office, the Controller's Office, adult education. We've even broadened this year to work within the-
We've even broadened this year to work within the school system and have somebody at his school. So we are, the fire department, we're trying to hit almost all the town departments. And again, with those 30 slots, we're providing a lot of good service. Yeah. So it is, I mean, the people have been tremendously helpful and for, you know.
It's a great program.
Yeah.
Benefits everybody.
Yeah, and helps our most vulnerable taxpayers.
Absolutely.
A little bit. I mean, it helps them a little bit. I think, you know, we should try to find ways to increase those benefits because of, you know, the contribution they've made to both the senior center and, center and other programs, but also the commitment to the town, even if it's not in their interest necessarily through the override. I mean, that, you know, that's the, a sense of civic, you know, commitment that I think is commendable.
So I will move a-
I think you have someone that wanted to speak on this.
I'm sorry.
I believe Mr. Carroll is hovering back there.
Mr. Carroll. This is a public hearing?
Right.
So you're a member of the public and we'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, I'm Frank Carroll and I should say I'm, I'm the co-chair of the Brookline Community Aging Network and, and we have, do advocacy on behalf of seniors. And I just add kind of briefly to this, to say this is a program we support on a longstanding basis and, and kind of very pleased to, to see that the participants in the program will get a kind of modest increase in compensation. I, you know, just kind of, kind of want to add a little bit to the discussion with your kind of speculation about the potential for the town to be a bit more generous. There was a time when I was active in the academic world and actually had an interest in this, in this program and looked into it kind of a little bit. And, you know, kind of one of the, kind of one of the features of it is that the, that the exemption that people get from their property taxes is been, is considered by the legislature exempt from state income tax. And, and, and what, I think what the legislature is doing is kind of ratcheting up slowly the amount that, that, that's exempt from state income tax. And kind of my, my guess is that if the town were to try, try to be more generous, that that, an additional town, what the town would offer would, would be subject to, to state income tax. And, you know, kind of one of the, kind of frustrating aspects of this, of this program is that, at least in principle, that the, what, what the participants gain, get benefited from it is subject to federal income tax. And, you know, I suspect many of the people who are participating in fact don't pay any federal income tax, but technically it is. But, but, but in any case, I'm very, very supportive and pleased that the, the Board of Selectmen has received it.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak to this warrant article? Seeing no one, I will therefore move a motion of favorable action, a recommendation of favorable action for town meeting. All those in favor? Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Selectman Heller? I'm sorry. Wow. It's getting late and chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last but not least, Mr. Gordon. This is Article Five, the VFW tax exemption. Sorry for the late hour.
My pleasure. Always good to have one Article Five on everybody's agenda for tonight. We got through the advisory subcommittee before advisory, so here I am and thank you. I'm Neil Gordon. I am the petitioner for one Article Five. I'm a Precinct One Town Meeting member. Article Five is a, an article that maintains the status quo for the American Legion and VFW post. I'm a VFW member. The, the post is currently exempt from property tax under provision of state law. The state provides three tiers of property tax exemption for veterans organizations. There's a statutory $400,000. There's a second tier of $700,000 that requires adoption by city or town. Brookline adopted the second tier by vote of town meeting 10 years ago. That's a $700,000 exemption. The property due to increased assessments is now pushing past $600,000 and we understand that the next assessment may put it over the limit. And I would suggest inadvertently make the VFW and the American Legion post subject to real estate tax if they don't have the full exemption. So one Article Five adopts the next tier, which is an up to $1.5 million assessed value exemption, which would keep the post exempt from real estate tax. There is a separate application that goes to the assessors office. It, the exemption doesn't apply to social clubs. It applies to veterans organizations that are in fact engaged in charitable, you know, community service and similar activities, which is what the American Legion and the VFW do. I know you're familiar with it and I know you're familiar with the property.
Yeah. The one thing I find a little unusual about the way the, this is worded, it, it exempts just one specific property in it.
So it actually, it does not. The, what the warrant article does is it adopts that particular section of the state code, which has the effect of exempting that particular property.
So it seems to me the motion should be that the town accept Fitsey of MGL, Chapter 59, Section 5, period?
As it was originally drafted and as the suggestion of the moderator-
Okay.
-was added, the effect of which would be.
Okay.
I'm led to believe there is no other qualifying property in town.
I will, I will leave the technical question on the exact wording of the motion to the moderator since he knows a little more about that than me.
There's no, there's no financial effect, because we haven't been getting tax from that property for many years.
Correct.
So we would continue to not get any tax revenue from that property, but I-
Because we don't get from any other nonprofits, so.
Yeah.
Many other.
Well, but this is a ceiling on the amount of exemption that veterans organizations can get as opposed to this total exemption for other nonprofits.
It doesn't sound as if the assessment is anywhere near the ceiling at this point.
The new ceiling.
The new ceiling.
Correct.
So I imagine, I would guess that the state will make an effort to raise the ceiling if that begins to affect some properties. We'll see.
I'm, I'm in favor of it. I think the veterans organization, I know recently, in fact, with all these returning veterans from Iraq and Afghanistan, you know, many of whom are dealing with PTSD or head trauma. I know the veterans organization is really trying to work on their outreach to these younger veterans and it's important work.
Ready for a motion?
Definitely.
I will move a recommendation of favorable action on Article Five. Those in favors, say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And that concludes our business tonight. Good night and we'll see you next Thursday.